Please note that under 940 CMR 29.10 sub 5, Dean Charter and Himaj Nagareddy will be participating remotely during this meeting due to a geographic distance greater than 20 miles via video conference. Please note that a quorum is physically present. A roll call vote is required for any and all votes of members participating remotely. So the first item on the agenda is citizens' concerns. If you'd like to speak, please come to the microphone up here at the podium. And after people in the room speak, we will give a chance for people online to speak. Please, hello. Yeah, absolutely. Please let us know who you are and where you live.
Carol Markachi, Orchard Drive. During a recent select board meeting, a social worker living in Acton stated that there is no racism in Acton. I know this statement is false. I have witnessed racism here with my own eyes and ears. I have heard the N-word and other racial epithets more than I care to enumerate, used by residents to describe other residents of color. A resident told me that black people do not deserve a living wage until they learn how to work, and only then should they be allowed to have better jobs than, say, a job at Walmart. A neighbor told me in anger at a political yard sign that I and other Acton residents have no idea what it is like to live with black people, when I mentioned to yet another Acton resident that I am part of a multiracial family, she gasped loudly, stammered a response, "What? Who? Whose side? Yours? Your husband's?" making it perfectly clear what she thought of my family. At the first Black Lives Matter March in Acton, a young woman of color spoke of having been called a racist epithet by people in passing car. Does her experience matter? The reported racist and anti-Semitic incidents which happened to students of color and Jewish students at the AB schools are already a matter of record. The more I reach out to my Acton neighbors, the more I hear about racist statements and behaviors by some Acton residents. Acton is no different from any other place in the U.S. where I have lived, studied, or worked, but our collective denial helps racism and antisemitism to fester and persist. Sorry. Denial is erasing, alienating, and dehumanizing, and it must stop. When a degree in social work is used to lend credence or weight to this irresponsible and provably false statement, it sends a dangerous message that the town should not listen to or act on the requests, demands, and stories of people of color vying for equal representation as fellow and sister residents. Erasure is dangerous. Town government is here to serve all of us and to pay attention to all of the issues in Acton, including racism and antisemitism. Part of what we need now is for the diversity officer position to become permanent, and for social workers of color to be hired in the AB schools and in the town level. Representation for people of color and for Jewish people is necessary for the health of all of us, and I will gladly pay more in my taxes to support it. Denial of racism and antisemitism in Acton has no place in our town governance. Please use my experiences outlined here to inform you as leaders. As Acton moves forward in serving all of us, denial is dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see nobody, no one else in the room and no one online. So we'll move on to the...
Claire Siska has raised your hand.
Oh, sorry. It wasn't up just a minute ago. Matt, could you let Claire speak, please?
Hi, this is Claire Siska, 14 Stowe Street. I just wanted to bring something to your attention. As a member of the dog park committee and a dog owner, I believe Mr. Manjariati got this letter from a neighbor, and it got passed on to the dog park committee. There was recently a very sad incident on the Jenks Land where someone's precious Labrador Retriever drowned in the water because the culverts, you know, were all blocked up from all the debris and everything. And this is not a criticism. I just, I know that the land stewards, you know, have responded to her, and the land use department is trying very hard to keep the streams clear. I just sort of more wanted to raise it and bring it to people's attention and hope that it can be, you know, for the safety of the dogs in town, that it can be communicated widely, that people need to be careful around those streams right now.
Thank you very much. Okay. We'll move on. I have several quick things in the chair update this evening. First, we had a 20th anniversary of 9/11 ceremony at the Public Safety Building on Saturday. That was very well attended. The ceremony was focused on the two victims from Acton, Philip Rosenzweig and Amy Sweeney, and the heroic efforts of first responders on that day. Acton's 9/11 memorial was dedicated 10 years ago. You can see it as you drive by the Public Safety Building, but if you haven't seen it up close, it's worth stopping someday and going up close. It's a, you know, very, very nice memorial. Next thing is, we're not expecting to have a fall town meeting, which is unusual for us. And up until recently, and we got the board's goals in order for this fiscal year, it wasn't clear whether we would have a fall town meeting or not, but now it's appearing as if we will not have a fall town meeting. And so the next town meeting would be our annual town meeting in the spring. And finally, due to a schedule conflict with one member of the board, most of the meetings this fall will start at 7:30 instead of 7 o'clock. There is one case where we'll start at 7:10 because there's a previously scheduled hearing. But in most cases going forward, it'll be 7:30 through the fall. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. I just want to echo the chair's mention of the 9/11 ceremony, and special thanks to the folks involved in planning that event. It was very well done, and I think there were more than 150 people there, which was very nice to see on such an important day. Also, I wanted to mention the professional development day. Thank you to the residents for accommodating us. We closed town offices and did some professional development all day Friday at NARA and other areas. Had a perfect day for it. I also wanted to mention the Boston Globe covered our River Street Dam in the issue over the weekend. As many of you know, we own a dam that we acquired within the last five years on the former Azaro property. The dam is in a serious state of disrepair, and it's been ordered to be removed by the state, and so we're navigating through the permitting process to accomplish that goal. And the good news is that we're going to be building a historic park on that site, and the historic park will be commemorating the industrial use that that parcel once held. So more to come on that, but it was nice to see the Globe recognize us for our efforts in that area. Climate action planning workshops, there was one today. There are others this week. I hope you... We received a municipal vulnerability grant in the area of $150,000 to work on getting our public facilities off of fossil fuels, which is exciting. It's something we were working on anyways, but now we have $150,000 from the state to help us do that. We also just found out we got a grant from Mass Clean Energy Center to help with our planning for the next phase of our bike share. As you know, we had bike sharing in West Acton and South Acton, and the company went out of business. And so we've been trying to reevaluate how to bring that service back to the community, and that's some funding to help us with that. A plug for our municipal monthly, which has all of this and much more, which you can get right in your email inbox if you subscribe to Town Notices. And also good news from the police department. Through the hard work of Chief Burrows and his staff, we were awarded a grant, a multi-year grant from the Department of Mental Health to bring on a full-time co-response clinician and jail diversion person. This is a mental health professional to work directly with the police department to help with responses to situations where mental health is the primary concern. This is a position that we had in town for about four years, but we shared it with nine other communities. The grant that we just received is sufficient, is enough money for us to hire our very own person for three years, and it's renewable beyond that. So that's very exciting news. Oh, Bumblebee Tree. I wanted to bring, I wanted to circle back with the board. About a month ago, there was a discussion about two trees at the newly created street called Bumblebee Way, which is on High Street. We'll be talking about High Street at great length in a few minutes. But in this particular situation, there are two very large trees obstructing people when they're leaving that street, or perhaps when they're entering as well. We worked with the developer and the tree warden, and the resolution that we've identified is to have the developer remove those two trees to remove that hazard. They are both in, not in great condition as far as trees go, and they're certainly a safety hazard, as our police department has confirmed. And the developer will be planting six significant trees, four maples and two oaks, at the locations that are approved by our tree warden. And the idea would be that they would be near the street to try to create a, continue the corridor of shade trees.
Thank you. Member minutes? Does any member of the board want to bring up some issues? Dean, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'd just like to commemorate a good friend of mine who passed away, Dave Brown. He was highway superintendent for a number of years. He passed away two weeks ago. Great guy. Graduated from Acton, Boxborough in 1967, one year ahead of me. Spent his entire working career working for the town, 41 years. Held every position in the highway department from labor all the way to superintendent. Raised a family in Acton. He still has deep Acton ties. His son lives just over the line in Boxborough. And, you know, it was really upsetting to me to see a good friend and a long coworker like that pass away so young. So that's it. Just hate to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members want to... Jim, please.
Sorry to hear about Dave Brown, Dean. Yeah, it feels like it's been a few weeks since we've met, so I got a few things. Let's see. Volunteers are the, you know, the lifeblood of how the town works, and the volunteer process of joining a committee runs through the volunteer coordinating committee, which has not been meeting for a while. So I just wanted to report that we've made progress towards meeting again. We may be meeting next week. And to my fellow board members, I would say if you have been, if any of the committees that your liaisons to have been particularly, you know, lacking a member because they've been stuck in the VCC process, please let me know, because we're going to be putting together an agenda shortly and hope to include, you know, prioritize list of people to get through interviews. It'll take us a few meetings to work through the backlog, but we want to start with, you know, whoever's most urgent. Let's see. John already mentioned the climate action planning workshops. Tomorrow's on nature-based solutions, and Wednesday's on transportation. They're all at noon. Let's see. Next one. At the last two resident concern times, we've had statements by people referring to other people who weren't there, who had said things at previous meetings, and that didn't seem to be the most helpful way to have a conversation. So I got them to sit down and talk with each other, and they're both very good listeners, and just want to say that sitting down and talking and listening are powerful correctives to divisions and misunderstandings. The last thing is that I know we're in the middle of this process about the Powder Mill Road area, so I was happy to announce that the Asabet Co-op Market, a member-owned community grocery store, has signed a lease at 86 Powder Mill Road. That's the, what's known as the Victory Plaza, where there used to be a supermarket, and now there will be again. They plan to open sometime in 2022. And I guess the last thing would be, John, thanks for announcing about the High Street trees. I mean, I'm, you know, I was clearly an advocate for not having to remove both trees, but I totally get the process we agreed on. It was, there was time pressure, there was safety issues, and we, you know, we empowered you to do what needed to get done, so I appreciate that. You've made a plan that's going to, you know, bring safety, and also is going to bring us some new big trees.
Thank you for all those things, Jim, and for orchestrating the listening session. Anyone else need, like to make a member minute? Himaj, please, go ahead.
Thank you. So a few things. Thank you so much, Jim, for giving us an update on the VCC. RAC actually wants to add a new member. Mike, guys, I can send you more info, but he's a dedicated member of RAC, and it would be great if we could make him a full member. So I will send you more info on that. Thank you. The second thing is, RAC is also looking for volunteers, so if anyone is interested, please feel free to reach out to me or the current chair, Ron Beck. The third thing is, I just wanted to acknowledge our public comment from today. You know, Acton is not a separate entity of society. We do have our own problems of racism and discrimination that do exist in this town, and it's so important that we constantly remind ourselves of that, and we make it a priority to address it. So I just really wanted to say thank you for the public comment, and also to just emphasize that denial is dangerous, and I think that we all need to do our part, every single one of us. So I am making myself available and here to help in any way that I can, and I hope everyone else does too. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Fran, do you have anything? Okay, we'll move on to our first public hearing of the evening. I will read the notice. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138, Section 12 of the General Laws, that Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 in the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, and virtually on Zoom at www actuamatt.gov/meeting/bos. On September 13, 2021, at 7:10 p.m., in the application for an all-alcohol license transfer from the Red Raven Inc. to Frolic &amp; Detour LLC located at 3 Nagard Park, Acton, the application is on file in the Select Board office and may be viewed during normal working hours. So, Mr. Manager, is there...
Are there folks here from Frolic &amp; Detour? Please come up and introduce yourselves.
Actually, you can sit here at the table. Thank you. And just press the button on the microphone, and the red light will go on.
Excellent. Thank you very much. My name is Eva Zelnik, and this is Vince Jolavet.
Hello.
And we are the two partners who are looking to take over the Red Raven and establish a new restaurant in that location called Frolic &amp; Detour, which is an employment law term. Frolic &amp; Detour, not everyone gets what it is. It's a little obscure, but... So we thank you for your consideration. Would you like us to speak a little bit about it, or do you have questions?
Yes, please speak a little bit about it, you know, maybe what hours you intend to keep, and maybe some general changes, you know, if you're going to be serving things in a different way, or whether you're going to have groups there, that kind of thing.
Yeah, so we are not going to change the hours or anything like that in order for, we're not planning anything kind of schedule-wise that is new. We obviously want to do what we can to improve the menu there, and that includes not only the food menu, but also the alcohol menu. There are, if you've been to Red Raven, there are a ton of craft beers on tap and lots of other different kinds of cocktails. We want to continue to be creative with that, and we also do want to bring in more live music to the site and just make it a place where people, you know, our vision is a place, a restaurant, that is not only somewhere where you bring the family after a Little League game on Saturday, but you go on to on a date night. And we want to, right now, the clientele is, there's kind of a very short dining hour from about 6:00 to 7:30, and then it really, the business really, really dies off. And so we want to, in addition to focusing on other things, we really want to focus in bringing more people into the restaurant between the hours of, you know, like 7:30 and 10:00. So that's one of the things that we do want to focus on. So I think with respect to alcohol, that is basically what we're looking to do.
Healthy children's menu, too. We've also, we both have kids and often find ourselves at restaurants where the kids are getting the same exact, you know, fried food type things, so we want to focus in on that as well.
Yeah, this is, this is really the epitome of a family business. Vince is my pseudo-brother-in-law, and I'm happy to explain that to you at some point. But, and we are both Acton residents who are transplants from other people, from other places, who both moved to Acton and fell in love with the town. And we are just really, really looking forward to being a part of the small business community here and building on the wonderful clientele that the Red Raven already has. We do plan to rebrand and rename the restaurant, but we're doing this in a very kind of slow, organic way. We have started working, or we started working with the current owners, Jen and John, about, well, a couple months ago now, and we've been in the restaurant on a daily basis, learning the business, working with them, learning the clientele, learning the employees, just really getting to understand what this particular business is all about. And then we want to do a, we're going to kind of keep things the way they are until January. So we're going to continue operating under the Red Raven, and then in January is when we would plan to do a grand opening where we would rebrand the restaurant, do a few minor cosmetic things indoors to give, to freshen it up, and then reopen as Frolic &amp; Detour.
Great. And will the transfer take place this month to the two of you?
I think as soon as the liquor license gets approved here and then approved with the state, then hopefully the next day. We're preparing it so the very next day, we're ready to get in there.
Excellent. Does anyone on the board have questions? Himaj, please.
Thank you. Just one question. Looking at the packet that we were given, page four, under Section 8, Occupancy of Premises, there's a question, will the landlord receive revenue based on percentages, or based on percentage of alcohol sales? Just wanted to clarify if that was yes or no. It was a little confusing whether it was yes or no for that.
Yeah, the landlord, part of the lease is that the landlord is a percentage of our gross after a certain number. So that will include alcohol sales, but it'll be the gross, just our gross number after a certain point. And I can give you that number, too, if you want, so.
Yeah, that would be great, actually, if you could give the number.
Yes. It's, I believe it's 1.8 million gross sales after that point. We would pay 8% in, 8% of our gross revenue in rent. So, and then before that, our rent would be, is like around, I think it's 11,000 or 12,000 a month, somewhere in there. So he, you know, he's giving us a break on the rent in the hopes that we can build it up and, you know, make some money, and then he'll join in it.
Anything else, Himaj? Any other questions, Himaj? Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Any members of the public, either in the room or online, have questions? If you're in the room, please go to the podium. If you're online, please raise your electronic hand. Okay. Seeing no one, I will take a motion to approve the liquor license transfer from Red Raven Inc. to Frolic &amp; Detour LLC located at 3 Nagard Park, Acton.
I second.
Is this one of those things where we have to close the hearing first?
Oh.
I'm just wondering.
I don't... Okay. Okay, I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
How about we close the hearing first? I move that we close the hearing first.
I second closing the hearing.
Jim, would you please call the roll on closing the hearing?
Okay. Fran Arsenault?
Aye.
David Martin?
Aye.
Jim Snyder Grant, aye. Himaj Nagareddy?
Aye.
And Dean Charter?
Aye.
Congrats. Liquor licenses transferred.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
But you can stay there, because we have one more thing.
Yeah. Not so fast. We're going to revoke it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't Frolic &amp; Detour quite yet.
Thank you. So I'll read the notice of the next public hearing. The Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on September 13, 2021, at 7:15, in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 in the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, and virtually at www actuamatt.gov/meeting/bos. On the application of Frolic &amp; Detour LLC under Section 140 of the Mass General Laws for a common vittler's license. Okay, hearing is open. I don't think you need to say what you said again, but I'll open it up for questions from the board first.
I always get confused about these different kinds of licenses. Which license is this?
This is basically a license to serve food.
Oh, okay. I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
So if we don't pass this one, they can only serve alcohol.
Yeah.
So it'd be good if we had the food one. Yes. Do you have a question? Okay. Anybody in the audience have a question or a comment? Oh, Himaj, please go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, just a quick question. So I know that this is an application for the common, can't pronounce it, Victualler license. So I was, this is more of a curiosity question, but I know there was mention of a kitchen inspection. Does that happen after this application goes through? And if so, is that scheduled? Is that going to happen soon?
Yes, it is going to be scheduled. We are turning in a packet to Matthew at the Board of Health.
I think this week, and then at that point in time, he will tell us when the inspection is, which I would hope that it happens in the next couple of weeks, if possible, yeah.
Actually, this word has a very odd pronunciation. It's basically the word vittles, right? So it's a vittlers license.
Yeah.
So, but don't look at the letters.
You need to work that into your menu.
Okay, seeing no other commenters, I will take a motion to close the hearing.
I'd like to move that we close the hearing.
I second.
It's convenient that we have two of you guys here. Jim, would you please call the roll to...
Sure. To close the hearing, Fran Arsenault?
Aye.
David Martin?
Aye.
Jim Snyder Grant says aye. Himaj Nagareddy?
Aye.
And Dean Charter?
Aye.
Okay, that's another one.
So, but it, don't look at the letters.
You need to work that into your menu.
Okay, seeing no other comment, commenters, I, I will take a motion to close the hearing.
I'd like to move that we close the hearing.
I second.
It's convenient that we have two of you guys here. Jim, would you please call the roll to?
Sure. To close the hearing, Fran Arsenault?
Aye.
David Martin?
Aye.
Jim Snyder Grant says aye. Himijan Nagareddy?
Aye.
And Dean Charter?
Aye.
Okay, that's another one. That's unanimous.
And now I'll take a, a motion to approve the application of Frolic and Detour LLC under section 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws for a common vittler license.
Yes, I'll move that one.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I, I wanted to say one more thing, if I could.
Please.
Just in, in regards to what this lady who left said earlier, that I, I would like to say that we are a very inclusive and, just a very inclusive family, and that's how our business will run.
Thank you very much for saying that. We have a pretty diverse population, which you must know if you already live here.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move forward with the vote. Jim, would you please call the roll?
Fran Arsenault?
Aye.
David Martin?
Aye.
Jim Snyder Grant says aye. Himijan Nagareddy?
Aye.
And Dean Charter?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. You can serve vittles.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much. Hope to see anyone there.
Thank you. I look, look forward to visiting you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the High Street Safety Audit.
Thank you. This is a project that Corey York, our Director of Public Works, has been leading, and he has brought in our consultant to do a brief presentation on the work that has been completed related to the High Street Safety Audit. Corey, could you please get us started, and we will bring Kristoff and, anyone else?
Someone named Joanne was there for?
Okay, we're good. So we'll bring Kristoff in, but if you could get us started, that'd be great. Thanks, Corey.
John, thank you. As John had said, we're here tonight to present the presentation for the High Street Road Safety Audit. It's been something that's been on our radar, that we've been looking forward to sort of going through this process and looking at the roadway and, and sort of evaluating safety aspects that we can do in further, sort of further design and implement into the road. So this is sort of that first step of looking at the road holistically, hearing problems, and sort of evaluating the existing conditions and coming up with sort of a, a game plan moving forward. So we had partnered with Tool Design to help us through this effort. And we have Kristoff here tonight to make a presentation, just sort of going over that process and what, what came out of it, so.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have a presentation, but I don't know how to share it. I don't have the option to share. So is there, we can, they can elevate me into a panelist, so I mean to share, I'm not sure.
Yes.
All right. Now I'm a panelist, okay. All right, hi, everybody. Good evening, the Select Board, Town Staff, and members of the community. My name is Kristoff Davasti. Again, I'm with Tool Design Group, and I'm here to give you a brief presentation about the road safety audit. Share my screen. All right, and you can see my screen, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, so just to give you a brief idea of tonight's agenda, so we're going to go a little bit over the general approach on how, how we came into this project, what, what our thought process was approaching the safety audit, a little bit about the project, and then go into some of the recommendations, and then leave some, some time for questions, answers, and some discussion. So just the general approach. So first, what is a road safety audit? What it is and what it's not. It, as Corey mentioned earlier, it's kind of the first step of the process when we're looking at implement or improving safety along a corridor. It's not meant to, to be a full design of any intersection or a detailed study of the corridor itself, but really to kind of get a, an initial understanding of what the issues are around the corridor. So the question that is, that they're trying to, that a road safety audit tries to answer is, what are the elements of the road that present a safety concern? To what extent are we talking about fatalities, serious injury crashes, or just fender benders? Which road users, so is this something that's prevalent to just pedestrians and cyclists, or just personal vehicles? And under what circumstances? So is this something that, that's happening when it's raining, during snow, when it's slippery outside, at night? You know, what are the roadway conditions when these crashes are happening? So as we start talking about safety, I wanted to kind of give the nuance when we're talking about safety, what, that there are actually three types of safety when we're addressing safety. The first one is what we typically refer to as legal safety. And those are our, our guidelines, our design criteria. Why are we putting a stop sign? Why are we, why do we have a stop bar at the intersection? And it's a way for us to, one, meet user expectations, and also to, to, as engineers and as transportation professionals, to minimize our liability. So that's the first part of safety. The second part of safety is what we typically refer to as statistical safety. And that's what most people think of when they think of safety. That's the amount of crashes that happen along a roadway at an intersection over the last three years, over the last five years. So that's statistical safety. And the last one is what we refer to as perceived safety. Now, this one is a little bit less known, but this is what we refer to as comfort. This is how we make our decisions. The average person may or may not know if it, the road was decided standards. They may or may not know how many crashes happened over the last five years. However, they know how they feel when they walk down the street. They know how they feel whether they're going to cross, or let their children walk to school or cross at a certain location. So when we're addressing safety, especially in a road safety audit, we want to make sure that we're addressing all three of them. So we want to make sure that we're designing the standards, that we're meeting users' expectations, and also shielding ourselves from liability. We want to make sure that we're addressing the crashes that are, that are happening along the corridor, but we also want people to feel safe. Now, they're not just safe, but they feel safe when they're walking down the street, or if they're crossing at a certain location. And so for, for a lot of, I guess, the, the history of transportation, there's been a normal inclination to just design the standards. But we know, I guess, through trial and error, that this is just not enough. And so the encouragement is for us to look at it at the, the intersection of these, these three types of safety. So making sure that we're, we're nominally safe, legally, I mean legally safe, statistically safe, and also that we're comfortable when we're, when we're addressing safety. So a little bit about the project, just give you the project timeline. So we, we originally started this, this project in 2021, when we had the road, the actual road safety audit. And so the road safety audit, we met with a multidisciplinary team of, that included some members of the Select Board, first responders, town staff, just to kind of get, get a, a kind of a, a different perspective at the table, understanding what are the issues that are along the corridor. The next step of the process is we met with, we had a public meeting over, back in March, where we invited members of the public to kind of give, hear their voice on what the issues that they were facing when traveling to the corridor. We delivered our final road safety audit report in June, and here, I am here to, to present the results of that audit, and then I guess the next step would be the implementation of some of these recommendations. The limits of the, of the, of the project are along High Street from Main Street, which is Route 27, all the way down to Powder Mill Road. A little bit about a crash history, between 2015 and 2020, there were a total of eighty crashes along the corridor. Out of those eighty crashes, about eighteen percent of those were injury crashes. Some of the hotspots that we saw along the corridor, the, the biggest one was at Parker Street, which had about twenty crashes. And then towards the northern end and the southern end, there were a couple of more hotspots, Main Street and a, and a Powder Mill Road. In terms of the types of crashes that we saw, about forty percent of those crashes were single-vehicle crashes. So these are crashes where a vehicle, the driver ran off the road, hit a tree, hit a utility pole, hit a sign, or something of the sort. Now, this is relevant because typically those types of crashes happen because of speed and speeding, when people are losing control of their cars. The other prominent type of crash that we saw were angle crashes, which were twenty-one percent of the crashes. And those are typically crashes where one or both of the drivers either ran a stop sign or ran a stoplight and crashed into each other. In terms of environmental conditions, twenty-one percent of those crashes occurred during nighttime. Now, just to give you an idea, in terms of statistically if that's significant, typically anything below twenty-five percent is not, is not usually considered significant, but this is pretty much at the threshold right now, where we, we might want to look, start looking at lighting to see if that's an issue, is lighting sufficient along the corridor. But typically twenty-five percent is when, is when we start really raising those questions. And then the other one, thirty percent of the crashes occurred when the road was wet, or icy, or snowy. Some of the data that we used, there was some, some speed and, and volume data that the town took a couple of years back. And so the speeding, of course, was observed around Parker Street, where the average speed was around thirty-four miles an hour, but the highest speed was clocked around Valley Road or Hatch Road, which at, at forty-eight miles an hour. Now, this is, of course, relevant when you're talking about the safety of pedestrians, because as we know, the, the higher the speed, the higher the injury of, if and when a crash happens, when a pedestrian is involved, their, their survival chances lower as the speed increases. So as part of our public meeting, some of the things that we heard, which I guess were consistent with what we saw in our crash data, speeding was an issue. We heard a lot of complaints about speeding. There was complaints about crashes happening when the, the pavement was slippery. We, we heard that people felt unsafe crossing the street and walking along the street. And so it was unsafe for both pedestrians and cyclists. And also, it was hard to cross and walk along, along the street. Corey might be able to talk a little bit about that one, but there is a sidewalk project that is going on, on High Street, so that, we know that some of that, that, that comfort is going to be addressed as part of the sidewalk project, but we, we felt it relevant to also bring that up. So a little bit about the recommendations that we came up with. So mostly corridor-wide, the biggest recommendation we had was for traffic calming, and we'll go a little bit into, into that as part of the next slide. We looked at recommending some entrance features. So on Powder Mill Road and on Main Street, those are mostly commercial corridors, but High Street is more residential. So we wanted to give, give kind of that entrance feature to let people know that they are leaving the commercial corridors, and that they're now entering a residential area. So coming into High Street, we wanted to kind of demarcate that territory to let them know that this is a residential area, and they should expect to behave in that, in, in that manner. Speed feedback signs, we'll, we'll go over in a little bit, and also to evaluate the side triangles at the intersections. I heard some, some, some talk about, I guess, some of the trees that were a side distance issue that, that were taken down. And so that, well, I guess, part of it was, as part of this road safety audit, was to evaluate the side triangles. That's one of the, the complaints that we heard also at the meeting about not being able to see at those corners, at the intersections. So when we talk about traffic calming itself, we, we categorize traffic calming into three categories. The first one is enclosure. An enclosure is, is basically putting more vertical surfaces closer to the road, kind of giving that, that sense of enclosure, kind of the outdoor living room feel, to, to get people to slow down. The next one is engagement. And that one is, is getting people to, to, to change their behavior through a perceived, I guess, to, to reducing their, their, excuse me, their perceived risk compensation. And so typically, that involves speed feedback signs, or median islands, and those kind of things. And the last one is deflection. And that one is either horizontally or vertically moving people through the space. So we're talking about speed bumps, chicanes, traffic circles, those kind of treatments. For this particular project, we didn't think enclosure was very relevant, because we already have trees along High Street. And because of right-of-way constraints, we didn't think that was, that was going to be something that would, we, we should be looking into. So engagement and deflection were the ones that we considered for this project. So one of the, the potential engagement measures that we, we thought could be done in, on High Street were median islands. The one on the right is, is the one that we thought might be a little bit more, more receptive for High Street, where it's in, the, the roadway itself does not narrow, but the, there's an optical illusion that the road doesn't, no, lanes are narrower than they really are. And then that'll get people to slow down, because they feel like the, the lanes are narrower than they really are. The next one, which is a little bit counterintuitive, but it's removing the centerline marking. And there are studies that show that by removing the centerline marking, you get people to, to reduce their speed. And essentially, what it does is it, it plays on risk compensation. So drivers will adapt their behavior basically to how, the, the amount of risk that they perceive as present during, in the street. So if they perceive it to be riskier than it really is, they are going to slow down and adapt their behavior to it. That, so that's the first thing. The second thing that removing the centerline does is that when, when you have a, a corridor where cyclists are sharing the road, drivers have a tendency of not wanting to cross a double-yellow line to give cyclists that space. So by removing the centerline, it, there's kind of an unwritten message that it's okay to, to move over and give cyclists that space as you're, you're overtaking them. We just talked about this a little bit, entrance features to kind of demarcate that this is a residential area. So this could be in a form of signs, it could be paint on, on the ground, or many traffic circles, or a combination of all three. And of course, speed, speed feedback sign, those are the ones that, that probably you've seen before, that tells the driver what their speed is, and kind of gets them to adapt their behavior to the, the speed limit. One recommendation that we had that was particular to Parker Street, and as, as I, as I mentioned, that was the one that had the, the majority of the, the crashes, was the, the introduction of a mini-traffic circle and a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, that's typically known as RRFB. One thing we heard was that with the crosswalk that is at Parker Street, drivers are not yielding to pedestrians, they are not stopping for pedestrians, and so the, the folks that are crossing at Parker Street feel unsafe, and they want drivers to know that to expect pedestrians at the crossing. So here's an example of the mini-traffic circle. The advan, one of the advantages of having a traffic circle along, at an intersection, at a typical intersection, is that it reduces the number of conflict points. A typical four-way intersection has a total of thirty-two conflict points. So by conflict points, that means different ways that crashes can happen. By putting a traffic circle or roundabout, it, it reduces the number of conflict points to eight. And one additional benefit is that it reduces the speed and the angle that the crashes happen at. So if, if and when a crash happens, it'll be at a lower speed and at a lower angle, which will reduce the severity of the crash. So that's one of the, the ideas we had, and why we're recommending the traffic circle at, at Parker Street. And this is just an example of the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, typically known as RFB. And it's just, it typically, when a pedestrian is about to cross, they would hit the button, and the flashes would come on just to let drivers know to expect pedestrians crossing the street. And with that, I will defer to any questions or discussion on the, on the topic.
I, I have a couple of quick questions. You showed a picture of a non-raised median. Would that be for a significant length of the street, or just at an intersection?
That is a very good question. Yes, that, those would be in, at spot location, not the, the length of the street. Where right-of-way permits, you would have just a short median, probably eight to ten feet long, that, that could be, that could, that would be used just to provide that engagement, but also if it's raised, if it is a raised median, it would also serve as a refuge for pedestrians, so they can do the crossing in two stages versus just one stage.
Yeah, okay, that, that's, that's.
Does, I assume that there's, even the non-raised medians, you need enough width of the street to have room for cyclists, because that optical illusion presumably will push cars to the right edge of the street, and you'll still need room for cyclists?
That, that's correct.
But again, those, those are at spot locations. And so when the, the, we're getting to the raised medians, typically what would happen is the cyclist would, would occupy the majority of the road, and the car would just have to wait till they pass the median, and then they would overtake when the median, when they pass the median. And so the intent is not to have the, the, the driver pass the cyclist when they're going through the median.
Okay, thank you. I assume.
If there was a traffic cir- I assume if there was a traffic circle at at Parker Street, that the stop sign on Parker Street would be removed. Is that right?
That is correct. And Corey can talk a little bit about that. But I think I think the next step in that one, we we wanted to evaluate all the options. And so the next step is there there is going to be the evaluation of Parker Street for a stop sign first to see if the volumes and 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 the the crash record necessitate a stop sign or if the the traffic circle is actually the best option. But yes, the the stop sign would need to be removed and it would be replaced by a yield sign on on all four approaches.
And if we put a flashing beacon across High Street in that case, we might also need a flashing beacon to cross Parker Street in that case. Because I think that, you know, someone entering a traffic circle is probably going to be looking mostly over their shoulder and and not looking where pedestrians coming from the right edge of the street.
Correct. Well, you don't necessarily need a flashing beacon. Because typically, the the maneuver is going to be done between five and ten miles an hour. Because that's the the speed that you'll need to slow down to 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 negotiate the turn around the traffic circle. So it it gives the driver sufficient time to to actually look to the left, the the vehicles that they're yielding to. And to notice if there a pedestrian is in the in the crosswalk going to the right.
Okay, thank you. I have just one more thing.
I think of all the other intersections on the street, the intersection with Conant really needs some, you know, what you call a diversion to 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 get people to slow down. Because right at that intersection and just barely south of that intersection is another hotspot. Not quite as hot as Parker Street, but almost. I can't tell you the number of cars that have go off the road in when it just starts snowing just after Conant Street headed south. And that that's where the six crashes are in your diagram. Or they or people pull out of Conant and the sightlines are particularly bad there. And that has the five crashes on your diagram. So the the two intersections, not counting the ends of the street, that I I think may may need diversions are are Parker and Conant.
Thank you. That that definitely is something that we can we can look at at a little bit in in more detail. But one thing I do want to mention is that the idea is not to necessarily just look at spot treatments like we're doing at Parker Street. But to have something consistent throughout the entire corridor. So you would have kind of a combination of both the the deflection, the medians, and and the speed feedback signs. And so we would have them every several hundred feet just to give to reinforce the message that this is a residential neighborhood. You know, you need to slow down. And so hopefully, if if done correctly, we definitely we wouldn't need to to just do it at one spot treatment on Conant. But just throughout the the entire corridor, just to reinforce that behavior.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the board have questions?
Comments?
I just have one quick question.
Fran, please go ahead.
As far as the frequency of travel, was the forty-five hundred to fifty-five hundred number per day?
Oh, sorry, that was the volume of traffic.
Oh, yes, per day. That was per day.
Hi, Dean, please go ahead.
So a couple of observations. One is, I believe that High Street is a scenic road. So when we get involved with possible tree removals. And the other piece of scenic roads hearings obviously would be stone walls, which probably are creating some issues. So hopefully, if this is a holistic approach, we can identify all of those locations where either trees or stone walls have to be removed. And go through a hearing process through the entire street rather than on a piecemeal basis. I think that would be certainly beneficial. Second question, is there sufficient right-of-way width at the intersection of High Street and Parker Street to accommodate the traffic circle? Or would there be some land taking involved?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, sir.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, yes, there would be. So the minimum width you need for a mini traffic circle would be twenty feet for the width of the roadway. And so based on what what we saw, it seemed like we had we would have enough enough right-of-way. And of course, we would have to confirm with a survey. But it seemed like we would have enough enough right-of-way to to have a mini traffic circle.
Okay, great. I mean, that's a terrible spot people complained about for many, many years. The last question I've got is, I'm a little skeptical of the idea about eliminating the painted centerline. One of my liaison assignments is to the Council on Aging, you know, try to represent older folks that might have not great vision anymore. And I'm I think a lot of people tend to navigate, especially in rainy conditions or at night, with that yellow centerline. So I'm a little skeptical about removing that, whether it's, well, it's certainly going to scare the heck out of them. So they'll slow down, but I'm not sure that it's that's the the end-all of this whole thing. Are there any other techniques that could be used that would allow better visibility, maybe of the edges of the road?
Correct, sir. So I definitely understand your skepticism. So the idea would be not to remove it for the entire roadway. So what we would do is, at the intersection and at the curves, we would actually put the the W centerline just at those locations. But when you get to the tangent parts of the roadway, you of course, you would have the edge lines, which delineate the size of the road. But you would remove the the double the centerline during the tangent. So the straight parts where people tend to speed more, you definitely want to remove it there. But when you get to the to the intersections and and around the curves, you want to delineate where where people need to stay on their on their side of the street. So.
Okay, thank you.
Jim or Hemetj?
Thank you. I have one specific question and three general ones. The specific one is, thank you for sharing the quantitative metric for the minimum width that a road has to be in order to put a traffic circle. Is there a minimum road width requirement for removing the centerline marking or adding an median line?
Yes, for the centerline marking, there is a requirement. So the the hate to use the acronym, the MUTCD, which is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, recommends for anything above six thousand vehicles per day, you are required to have a double centerline marking. Anything below that you have is optional. So we are well well below that threshold. So you have the option of keeping it or or removing it.
Got you. Thank you. And sorry, just to confirm, that was for the median line or removing this?
Removing the centerline, sorry, yeah.
Great, thank you. My second question is, on page eight of the report that we were given, there's mentioned that the audit was held virtually, the the road safety audit. And I was wondering how that works. Obviously, you know, COVID posed a lot of impossible obstacles. Yeah, I would love to know more.
Sure. So the the process, the the way we did, of course, we we kind of had the the review of the crashes, of course, in in office. But we had somebody go out to the field and videotape the entire corridor with a three-sixty camera and on kind of mounted on the car and use that as part of the audit process. And so when, before we met up with the multidisciplinary team, we sent out the videos and the crash data and all the information we had. So they had a chance to review before coming to the audit. And so during the audit itself, we actually virtually drove down the corridor to kind of show, okay, this is, you know, Conant Street. This is on Parker Street. This is what we're seeing. And they got a chance to to kind of do three-sixty views of the area and then discuss, you know, the issues.
Thank you. My third question is, you mentioned that there was a public meeting in March. I was wondering if, you know, if we have any demographic information on that, whether a lot of people there are present or people who live on High Street. You know, were senior citizens represented? Would love to know more info on that.
Most definitely. I can I can send you some of the results after the meeting. But if I'm remembering correctly, there there were quite a few folks that live on High Street and also some folks from neighboring streets that travel through High Street. One one gentleman that I distinctly remember was somebody that had visual disabilities that 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 spoke up about some of the the issues that he was having crossing High Street. And I think that was that that was actually very helpful. And 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 kind of thinking about the most vulnerable folks that use the street and and how do we address those those needs? So in terms of demographics, I I don't know if we have that. But I will definitely look into it a little bit more and and definitely send it out to you all to 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 review.
Thank you. And then my last question was, I was wondering if Tool Design worked with any other towns in the area and kind of what those outcomes were.
I can't speak specifically on that. So typically, we have quite a few offices. We have seventeen offices nationwide. There's we have do have a Boston office that does do a lot of work in Massachusetts. A lot of the road safety audits I usually take care of. And so that's that's how I got I got involved with this one. But unfortunately, I I can't really speak to the, I guess, all the 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 towns that that Tool Design has has worked with.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
And Jim, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a question for Corey. So near the end of the Safety Audit Report, there's a wonderful set of tables, tables four through nine, that detail a bunch of potential safety enhancements and give information about the safety payoff. You know, high, medium, or low, the timeframe, long or short or medium, and the cost. And I was wondering if you had sort of validated that list, the the sort of the the assignment of of payoff, timeframe, and cost. And whether that's, you know, how you're going to be, you know, presenting these as, you know, opportunities for investment. Or or whether you're still, whether you haven't had a chance yet to really evaluate all those judgments there.
Yeah, we have gone through that. Jim was going through the initial analysis and going through a lot. I've been going through that as well. And in general, it looks pretty good. I mean, as they talk about sort of short-term, long-term projects, they talk in the range of like an immediate year to one to three years or longer. I mean, it's kind of relative to all the other projects that are going on in town, as we try to time these and fund these. But it all seemed, it all seemed pretty good. I mean, as far as next steps for us, as Kristoff had indicated, as kind of a sort of a short-term analysis, we're looking at the Parker and High as a for a multiway stop analysis. We've done it in the past. We want to do it again to see if possibly, at least in the short term, it might be something that's a viable option that we could look into. We've been working with the police on sort of speed enforcement. We always do that on streets. We do traffic counts. If we can isolate a pattern, we work with them to sort of, if we see a reoccurring problem throughout the day, they can target their enforcement, things like that. They were able to acquire a grant to buy some portable feedback signs, which is very helpful for the safety officer where he doesn't have space to park his trailer that he has now. High Street's one of these situations where there's not a lot of room on the shoulder to put it off the side. So they were able to acquire, I think, three signs. So we've been installing signposts. We've put some on High Street and several other streets throughout town with the bracket and the speed sign. So what allows the safety officer to do is to quickly rotate these around town. And he'd actually, I think, they have one on Stowe Street right now, and I think they have one on High Street. So and what that you kind of do is allow us to sort of work in conjunction with some permanent signs. We're we're in the process of looking at some new permanent sign locations. So on Strawberry Hill Road, there was there was discussion of speeding on there as well as issues at the Pope and Strawberry Hills. So there was recommendations for speed feedback signs there as well as on High Street. So what we've been doing is working with the police. We were looking at a permanent sign that would if sort of alert drivers as they're approaching Faulkner Hill and coming in onto High Street. And then another permanent sign down by Parker as they're approaching that approach. And then the police have a series of new posts within that area zone that they can throw up the speed feedback as like a added enforcement. So that was sort of a concerted effort that we're looking at trying to do that there. But yeah, I mean, a lot of their payoffs, they have like the sort of the low, low-cost things as far as doing some additional trimming, things like that, up to and including an intersection redesign as far as if we were to evaluate Parker Street for sort of new improvements, whether it was a mini traffic circle or something else. And then being able to look at these median islands, that would help bring a little more awareness as you approach intersections in concert with looking at crosswalks at these locations. I know crosswalk at Faulkner Hill, and I think Cona Street came up as questions. So it's something that would take further design to be, see if we can install, build one safely. But in conjunction with these possible possibility of like these traversable median islands might help to bring a little more awareness to the intersection, to slow people down and then make it safer to have the crosswalk there. So but yeah, these are all things we'll be looking at, sort of timing in conjunction with sort of how they laid out those that we may not fall exactly in line with exactly their sort of one, two, and three. It's going to kind of depend on if we're doing a couple of things and it makes sense to try to factor in something else. So we have that opportunity. If if we say we had an opportunity to to move a wall, something a little bit more aggressive, and we could time that accordingly quicker, we would take that opportunity to do that.
My my last question, thank you. For that analysis. The last question is, do you think High Street will ever be a safe place for bicycles?
It's a question based on the user. I mean, you when you look at those kind of charts, you have everyone from a recreational user to they put it in the category of like a high-stress user. I would put myself more in the recreational user category. So it but well, our hope is is that we do these improvements and that we can bring the speeds down and make it feel better for everyone that might want to be out there in the streets. I know during the surge in COVID and the volume went down, I saw a lot more bike use during the day when I was driving back and forth. I would hope for the for everything that we're putting into this, I would hope that we we do make an improvement that most bike you or at least a good amount of bike users might feel comfortable, whether they feel comfortable driving in the road or whether when we're able to finish the sidewalk, they might feel comfortable going on High Street on the sidewalk, kind of giving them those options.
It's great to hear you keeping that possibility open. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Corey, just two follow-up questions. Do the feedback, speed feedback signs record also? Or do they?
Yeah, yeah, they do have the capability of recording data.
Okay, great. And And speaking of the sidewalks, I know there, you know, after the work earlier this year, there's only two properties left that don't have the sidewalk in the place that's the hardest to put the sidewalk. Is that something that that is scheduled and you have an idea when that would be done?
We're still negotiating with one of the owners for an easement. We have been working with Eversource over the last six to seven months, working on some alternatives. So I'm hoping to have some more options to put before before the homeowner and and potentially before the board for consideration.
Thank you. I'll I'll now open it up to questions from the the public. If you're in the room here, please go to the the podium microphone. And if you're online, please raise your electronic hand. Matt, I see no one here in the room. Could you let people who are on remotely on, please? Could you let people who are remotely on, please?
Absolutely. Is that Franny Osmond first?
Hi, this is Franny Osmond from West Acton. I I might have missed it because I wasn't entirely, I wasn't present for the whole thing. But what comments did you have about specifically about the crosswalk across from Faulkner Hill Road, which has been requested?
Just just
Franny, you mean crossing High Street at Faulkner Hill Road?
Yes, yes. The people on that road had come to the Transportation Advisory Committee and to the Select Board requesting that. And then we were told there would be this audit. So there was the audit and they gave input. So I specifically want to really respond to them. There's there's a man who's blind who lives on that road. And there were a lot of other people who wanted to cross there safely. And I wanted to know what specifically would come out of this. And if if you addressed it already when I wasn't listening, please tell me that, because I'll be listening to the tape tomorrow.
I I touched on it briefly. That is part of, I know Kristoff talked a lot about the sort of entrance islands and the traversable medians for approaching intersections and sort of as people turn onto High Street. As part of looking at those which would help to sort of draw people's attention and knowing that something's coming to help kind of control speed. That would be sort of a one step in conjunction with looking at crosswalks at these locations. I know in in the road safety audit for the for that intersection, it was discussed as far as further evaluating a crosswalk there. So we would have to look at a design of where we could put one safely and then hopefully incorporate some of these other mitigation factors that would help help with the speed, so that hopefully with the combination of that, it makes it safer for people to cross.
Okay, I mean, I think the slowing down speed is important, but I definitely think a crosswalk, and I think ideally a crosswalk with a light would be would be helpful.
Thank you. Anyone else want to make a comment?
Okay. I'm seeing no one. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. John, what are the next steps here?
So using this information, I think Corey and his team will will recommend improvements to High Street based on the recommendations in that study and which we'll try to incorporate into our future capital planning. Or if possible, if it's truly low cost, just in our regular operational maintenance and upkeep to the roadways.
Thank you. And thank you, Kristoff, very much.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Okay, we'll move on to item six, which is another public hearing. And I'll read the notice. The Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, September thirteenth, 2021, at 7:25 PM on the proposed amendments to the existing traffic rules and orders to add the following parking prohibitions. Strawberry Hill Road, both sides from the intersection with Great Road to the intersection of Esterbrook Road and Beverly Road, both sides from the intersection of Main Street for a distance of approximately 230 feet, and adding the following stop sign location, Faulkner Hill Road at High Street. And also to update the fee structure for electric vehicle charging stations excluding the South Acton commuter lot.
Just go through a quick presentation if you want.
Yes, yes, please.
Okay. Yeah, so as as David had read out, I have sort of the first three here to talk about as far as road related traffic rules and orders. The first one, the first two are related to no parking zones, one along Strawberry Hill and the second one along Beverly Road. And then the third location is is sort of, sort of a low cost up as that came out of the High State Road Safety Audit as a stop sign on Faulkner Hill and High Street. So when we look at Strawberry Hill Road, we did a road safety audit back in 2018. Shortly before that, we had had some issues with on-street parking. We had come before the board at that time. It was decided that they wanted to want us to take a closer look at the street and come back with some and have a little bit more analysis with it. So we had worked with a consultant to do a road safety audit there. And what we're talking about here would be a no parking zone along Strawberry Hill Road from Great Road to Esterbrook. Along this stretch, it gets pretty narrow. Just some of the things that you see, the stone walls close to the road, poles, trees, guardrails by the wetlands, things like that. So prohibits vehicles really being to get off the road enough to allow the vehicles to pass. It was causing issues. I think the majority of the issues were happening, occurring, I think, on the weekend nights, like Friday night, Saturday night, when the restaurant was getting busy. And so there was some issues with vehicles getting by and things like that. So we did take a closer look at it and the pavement itself and the width of the shoulders. It in the report, it kind of does call out that it's, that it is very narrow and dangerous for having on-street parking as it's as the road is right now. There was some discussion of if we were able to redesign each section of Great Road and do a widening of the street there, we might be able to get a few spaces up front. But for the most part, running down this way was difficult for that. I know the the police department had written a memo back then supporting it, as well as the fire department had concerns as far as if there was on-street parking, and then they're trying to respond to a situation and turning into the driveways there. They wouldn't have sufficient room to bring in their large apparatus. I know at the last meeting, we did have a resident that lived at this address. I don't know if they still live there or not, but they raised some concerns about having a no parking zone in front of their home. They had had concerns about if they had guests, they wanted the opportunity to be able to park on the street. This is one of those sections as well that's it's on a curve. There's walls and vegetation, poles close to the road. It is, it does have its difficulties as well here. It's not like it's a straight open section that allows sort of easy viewing. So we had continued to keep that parking request to go from Great Road to Esterbrook. And like I said, as in the road safety audit, they they look at a host of different potential safety improvements. But essentially, the road as is, wasn't safe to allow the parking on the street in this location. The next location was Beverly Road. There was a resident concerned with, I think it was mostly commercial vehicles, but vehicles that were parking on the side of the road here. I think they were running to the establishments that are at the the shopping area next door. But they were leaving their vehicles running for long periods of time, whether they were staying at either, what the reason was they were staying there. So there was a request put into the police department to try to stop that. So this request is sort of from, it's it's along that scratches, it come around the curve of Beverly Road about where the the tree line is up to main. It would help to alleviate parking here. Either redirect them into the main parking area or maybe across the street at the Kmart area for now. And then the last location that we have, this is just a couple of views of Beverly Road. You can kind of see, looking up the road there, the the bottom picture, if you look to the left, that tree line, it's about where we have the proposal to stop for the no parking zone. I think as they get further back here, I think it would be probably more enticing to bring your vehicle over into the the parking areas that would be closer than parking back here. And then the last traffic rules and amendment that we have is to get an approval for a stop sign on Faulkner Hill Road. One of the, some of the comments that came out of the road safety audit was that there's no stop sign there. And it would help to make it clearer for people coming down Faulkner Hills, they're approaching the side that that they're approaching the side of High Street, they need to stop and look. So this is a fairly easy fix here. They said there was, there was some comments that there was a stop sign there at one point. But as I went back through our traffic rules and orders, whether or not there was one, we didn't have an approval to have one there. So we're just seeking approval to add that stop sign back at that location. And the last traffic rules and order is they, finance department was looking at the fee structure for EV stations. But I don't know if you want to ask questions about the road issues first, and then we can come back to this.
Any member of the board have questions on the the three traffic things or two parking things and one traffic thing?
Any members of the public have questions on the no parking signs or the stop sign at Faulkner Hill Road? Okay, Corey, I think we're ready to move on to the charging stations then.
John might add some more information. I know the finance department was running some new analysis on the fees out there and trying to come up with a new rate that was sort of covering electricity and that. They had, they had come out with a rate structure today that John might be able to further expand on.
Yes, I will. Thank you. So we have one charger
Town Hall, and then we have two at the rear lot near the playground, behind Town Hall and near Asap Island. And when they were first installed as charge point, we provide a period of time for free to encourage people to use the spaces, to encourage people to drive electric. And then afterwards, there would be a rate charge that we thought made sense and was reasonable. We've been finding that people have been using the chargers for fourteen minutes and then leaving or doing something else. So the rate structure needs to be adjusted. So what we're proposing to do is, I think, I believe right now, we were doing fifteen minutes free, and then it was a dollar fifty an hour thereafter. What we're proposing to do now is just go straight to two dollars an hour. And actually, the way you're supposed to account for that is by kilowatt, which is harder for me to, or by, hold on, there's a different unit of measurement we're supposed to use. Two dollars an hour is the easy way to describe it. Does that work?
Yeah, that that works. I suspect that's probably at 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 thirty amps, something like six kilowatt hours per hour.
And and the reason that we wanted to do an hourly measure is that there is a scenario where someone fills up their electric tank, so to speak, but stays on the charger and keeps it from someone else from using it. So that's why we charge by the hour.
Comments?
Yeah, just, so ChargePoint has the flexibility of just charging per hour instead of per kilowatt hour? Because I thought we might need to enforce the thing about, you know, moving your car when you're done charging by just having that as as an additional rule, that if you're done charging, you have to move. I noticed that that's, there's a sign there that says that now.
Yeah, so, you know, we're we're in our first or maybe our second year with this with this program. And we've, as we committed to, we would come back and adjust it when we found that it wasn't working. We found that it wasn't working, we're coming back with another adjustment. We may come back again with further adjustments. But I think for now, we'd like to adjust it to two dollars per hour, which is roughly point three kilowatt hour. Point thirty, thirty cents a kilowatt hour. And then we hope that that works out and that we don't need to come back. But the goal here is to create incentive for folks to drive electric, but also to make sure that we're not covering the costs and and putting undue burden on taxpayers.
Thirty cents a kilowatt hour is is slightly more than you're paying for the electricity, so it seems reasonable to me.
Because we also have to account for the maintenance of the machines and everything else that goes into providing the electricity. So that's, we believe it's a reasonable rate. Thanks.
John, do you know if ChargePoint offers to have kind of a grace period after the car is charged? You know, so for example, in in some cases, I I know of chargers that after your car's done charging, it doesn't cost anything where your car's consuming no electricity for like fifteen minutes or half an hour to give you a time to unhook. And then and then you get, come back to a, you're you're stealing the space charge. So it's just, I don't know what what opportunities. And like you say, you, we can, we can do this and come back again, but
Yeah, we'll definitely be back before the winter because we are putting ChargePoint systems at the commuter lot, and we want to get those rate structures before you, so that we can do that effectively too. So we can, I can, we can look into the question of grace periods.
Yeah, I I also don't know if ChargePoint offers the ability to text you when they're done. I don't, I I have a ChargePoint card, but I don't use that if it if they have that. But that's, that's a nice thing. So when your car's done charging, you know, if you're in Town Hall, you can, you know, you have time to run down and move your car.
They do, in fact, have that capability, because I've seen it. I've gotten text notifications. What might be even more interesting would be a text notification to the police if we if we have an enforceable law about, you know, sitting in the spot without charging. It might be an opportunity there. Not that I'd encourage us to do that very much, but especially if if ChargePoint does actually allow us to charge by the hour, then I guess it's okay to have cars sitting there and not charging. At least we're getting revenue.
I mean, I think it's fair to continue to charge, but I'd like to see a little bit of a grace period so you can run down and get your car unhooked. Any any other member of the board have a a comment on the charging?
Are these fee structures going to transfer to the new?
Could you just turn on your mic?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, I was curious if the fee structure was going to transfer to the new charging stations.
The ones at the commuter lot? No, our intention is to come back to you when they're when they're installed to to, because we want to look at the relationship between parking all day to use the train and what we just talked about as it relates to, you know, when your car's done charging, do we charge them all day long, even though they? So we're going to look into that a little bit further and get back to you before those calls live. And we do, I did hear that you got a text message when your car's done, according to one of our sustainability, actually our sustainability director.
Yes, that's great. Himiji, you had a comment?
Thank you. So John, if you can repeat what you said, I I missed it. So currently, you get fifteen minutes free, and then it's a dollar fifty. What was the unit for that?
It's an hour per hour, which breaks down to something else, kilowatt hours. I'm sorry.
Thank you. And then has the math been done for how much more this would have cost like an average user?
No, you know, we're 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 still
At an early phase of using this, the building was, you know, closed to public for six months in the last year. And so we, the only thing we have noticed is is a pattern of use where people use it for fourteen minutes, which is what we're trying to address here.
Got you. And then my third question actually pertains to the no parking material that we covered. So I was wondering, Corey, if you can actually elaborate on whether there are other no parking zones in Acton and where they are, and if we've gotten any feedback from that?
I can send you the list of where we have approved no parking zones. There's quite a few. I can't say I've heard any feedback back. I do know we we deal with some parking issues in West Acton Village that we work with. We're working with the police and that to resolve. But for the most part, I haven't heard of, I haven't heard too much feedback from the other zones around. But I can send you that list of where they are and and that.
Thank you. That'd be helpful.
Just as a matter of cost for electric, just regular electric rates, not our charges, but if you're just paying for the electricity at at normal New England rates.
The cost per mile in an electric car is about half the cost of a gasoline car of the same size, in rough, rough terms. Or, you know, said another way, if you charge to fill up for two hundred miles, or you get enough gasoline to go two hundred miles, you'd you'd pay twice as much for the gasoline as you do for the electricity. Any any other comments? Any, any other comments or comments from the public on the electric rates? Seeing, seeing none. John, can we do this all in one motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I will take a motion to put no parking signs on Strawberry Hill Road from the intersection with the Great Road to the intersection of Estherbrook Road, and to put no parking signs on Beverly Road from the intersection of Main Street to, for a distance of approximately 230 feet, and to add a stop sign to the end of Faulkner Hill Road at High Street, and to change our fee structure for the town's electric vehicle charging stations to be $2 an hour.
I would like to make that motion that we amend our existing traffic rules and orders to meet the conditions you've just described so eloquently.
A second.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Jim, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Fran Arsenault?
Aye.
David Martin?
Aye.
Jim Snyder-Grant votes aye. Himaj Nagareddy?
Aye.
Dean Charter?
Aye.
That's unanimous, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Thank you. Everyone, thank you very much, Corey.
Thank you.
The local rapid recovery program, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. This is a program that we've been working on through our state grant to help our community recover from the pandemic, and set us up for funding in several programs that the governor, Governor Baker administration is working on rolling out in the next few months. The update is that the draft report will be distributed. It's available online, and we'll be sending out information on how to access it tomorrow. It's a result of work starting in early August, and we're consulting met with staff several times. There was a working group. We also met in person with shop owners and customers at the Great Road plazas to get feedback. There was other stakeholder outreaches, actually going back to June. So they released a draft plan, which identified five high priority projects. Public comments will be accepted on these five projects and, and what we're proposing to do with them through an email to the planning division at planning@actonma.gov by, we're asking that you send them in by September 22. And then we're holding a final virtual public workshop on September 28 at 7:00 PM. And that will be hosted by the town planner, or by the planning director, Kristen Gishard, on behalf of the steering committee and economic development committee and members of the board are part of that as well, where we'll be reviewing the, the local rapid recovery plan recommendations. And then we're supposed to submit our final plans to the state by October 8. Then the Baker-Polito administration will be using these plans to evaluate and streamline funding opportunities that they're going to make available to us. So it's a lot of work. It's a very fast pace, and the target, there's a lot of things that keep changing about the program. But the good news is, is that we're in a pipeline with money at the end to help with some priority needs that we, we understand, relate to Great Road and making those businesses there more successful and filling some of those vacancies that we know are a concern.
And I do know that a number of businesses are very interested in some of these changes, like wayfinding signs and, and other, other things. So that's all very good. Any, any members of the board have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very comfortable with this process. I think what I would want to make sure we all understood is that there are non-municipal entities that are, have a big impact on well-being of Acton residents that, that, you know, are included in this process by dint of that they can send in their recommendations. But I just want to make sure that we understand that we, we, we will and we should be getting input from the Water District, from the Housing Authority, from the schools. Those are the three big ones off the top of my head that are, you know, not strictly under the purview of the, you know, of this, you know, the Acton Town Government, but are key to, you know, citizens' well-being.
Thank you. Any, any other members of the board? Himaj?
I was just wondering if you could elaborate a little bit more on what our specific outreach plans are to small businesses that could, that would benefit from this program.
Well, the, the outreach has happened as part of developing the plan.
So they met one-on-one with store owners, plaza owners, and customers to help develop these recommendations. And just to give you the short version, and again, this, this will be published, it is published right now, and we'll distribute a link that makes it easy to find tomorrow morning. But the five project areas that are part of the recommended, recommended plan are wayfinding from the rail trail to make it easier for rail users to find businesses. Great, Great Road wayfinding, so just generally making it easier for people navigating Great Road itself to know what they're looking at and where to find things. There's been a strong desire by, from the business community to look at providing wastewater and sewer for Great Road businesses. And then there's a recommendation related to marketing services. Small businesses don't have huge marketing budgets, and this, this recommendation is for them to combine resources and have the town or some other entity lead a shared marketing effort. Those are the main recommendations, and there's much more detail on each of those in the report. And so businesses were involved all along. And really, there's small businesses all over town, but this project just focused on Great Road.
Anyone else? Thank you. We'll, we'll move on. Item eight is the draft statement and next steps for the ICLIC 150 Race to Zero.
There was a, sorry, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There was a, there was a recommendation from the town manager about accepting this process formally. Sample, there's a sample motion here. And there was also a sample motion about, no?
No, I think, no, I think that...
Is that for a future meeting?
No, no, that's for item 13.
Oh, great. Okay. Never mind.
That's okay. Okay, so item eight is the ICLIC 150, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
At a recent meeting, we brought forward a recommendation to participate in this program through ICLI, and there were some questions from the board. And so our sustainability director, Andrea, is here to answer those questions and give any, some more context to why we think this is a good effort to get involved in. Andrea?
Good evening, everyone. In the select board materials, you can find the form, the commitment form. And at the last meeting, we talked about having me draft a statement. The statements are quite short. So I included a sample statement, and I'll read it out loud. A town of Acton residents declared a climate emergency last year, demonstrating their commitment to a better, more sustainable future for all. Joining the city's Race to Zero reiterates Acton's dedication to reaching net zero carbon emissions as quickly as possible, while also joining a national effort for more ambitious action against climate change. And, and that's included in the materials as well, in case you'd like to see a text version. And essentially, once we submit the statement, we have 30 days to provide a one-to-two-minute video highlighting specific examples of what we are doing to plan to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And there's a lot of flexibility in the development of this video. And ICLI is also willing to support us in actually putting the video together. We can send in individual videos, can include staff members. It doesn't have to be the whole select board at the same time. So there's a lot of flexibility there, but that's something for, for you all to think of. I think it makes sense to do a few individual videos of whoever would be interested in participating, and then including some staff members as well.
Any member of the board have a question or comment for Andrea?
Himaj?
Just a quick comment. Thank you so much, Andrea, for doing all this heavy lifting. I think this sounds great. I think that framing Acton and our efforts in climate action to the international efforts that are going on right now to address climate change, I think is incredible. So just really excited. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments?
If there are no more comments and no comments on Andrea's proposed statement, I would, I would take a motion that we approve the statement that Andrea read.
Sure, I would move that we approve the statement that Andrea read and that we go ahead and join up with the ICLI 150 program.
A second.
Excellent. This is going to be very easy for the, for Lisa, because all these motions are moved by one person, not by another person. So...
We should change it up a little.
No, no, this is, this is good for Lisa. Okay, if there are any, any further comments? Okay, Jim, would you please call the roll?
Fran Arsenault?
Aye.
David Martin?
Aye.
Jim Snyder-Grant says aye. Himaj Nagareddy?
Aye.
Dean Charter?
Aye.
That's unanimous, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. We can move on to item nine, approve intermunicipal agreement for a regional transportation pilot program called Making the Connection. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. This is a program that we're participating in with a few other communities. Austin Segana, who's the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs, prepared a memo, which I believe is in the packet, describing the merits of moving forward with this proposal. And I do know that Franny Osmond from the Transportation Advisory Committee is also here to advocate or to speak to this project. If you'd like to hear more from Franny.
So are, are members aware what this is? It's a, it's a pilot program to encourage use of rideshare services for, and to support the use of rideshare services for various groups of people that might not have, have available transportation. So Jim, please.
Another aspect of this program that I find very exciting is it's an opportunity to gather data about needs for transportation. So through the, through the funding, which will pay for all these rides, there's also an, an analysis process that's being paid for, so that we'll understand more about, hey, if people could go places, where would they want to go and when? And, and, you know, so it would be, help us understand what we're missing.
Yeah, that's a very good, very good point. Any other comments? And Franny, if you would like to make a statement, please just raise your electronic hand.
Hi.
Oh, excellent. You're already allowed to speak. Please go ahead, Franny.
Well, I was just going to give a little background, just for people's interest, although it's not a very, I don't think it's going to be a very controversial decision to sign the IMA for this, the intermunicipal agreement for this. But I just thought I would give a little background. A few years ago, I was learning a lot about microtransit, which is a combination of Uber, Lyft-type ride-hailing programs. And those are called TNCs, or Transportation Network Companies. So when I refer to TNCs, I mean those Uber, Lyft-type things. And it's a combination of those and public vehicles, this idea called microtransit. And the idea is that it allows for more efficient use of vehicles and means that users of the vans don't have to make arrangements days in advance, but can depend on being able to contact the system right away when they're ready to go. And it avoids people making appointments for a ride just in case and then canceling, and it avoids empty fixed route buses circling the town. And I was working with a few other towns, including Sudbury and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, to learn about how microtransit was working in other parts of the state and country. And we seriously considered the offer of a company called Translok to conduct a demonstration project with microtransit in our area. The greater Attleboro area did do one of those demonstrations, and they've continued to use microtransit. And they observed, by the way, that this type of system worked well mostly in the less dense areas, which gives me hope for its future around here, because that's part of our problem, is that we're less dense. Anyway, we didn't apply for that, obviously, and we continued to talk. And right around then, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and the Community Compact Program encouraged us to apply for community compact funds to test new options with taxis or TNCs, covering some of the gaps in our service that our van service hasn't been able to cover. Around Acton, that type of trip is longer distance trips than our usual service area. For example, if somebody's going to Lahey Clinic or another medical service area, or they're visiting family or getting to a job in another town outside our service area, and evening and weekend trips. The idea is that, of this program, is that a program manager would be funded to assist the towns with their pilot program, and they'd put together the data about how people are using those new services. And there's also some money to support actual service. So while working on this, which slowed down a lot during the pandemic, some of the other towns already implemented their taxi programs or their agreements with Lyft or Uber. Sudbury is using a TNC, and they also have a taxi program that they combine with Maynard or Stowe, who uses a company that services that area. Carlisle's been using a TNC. Acton hasn't quite started. We do have separate money that we received from another grant program to specifically use taxis, and I think we're really close to implementing that. You'll hear about that on another day, I'm sure. And we are getting closer to using TNCs. As we start using those, this program that you, I hope, will sign the agreement for, will be watched and assisted through the program manager. It will help us, really, as Jim said, put together the data to see how are people using these new services? What, what's being helped, what's not? How does it interface with our dispatch for our usual vans? So it's a, it's a good moving ahead. It's, it's a frustratingly slow moving ahead. But I really like having Nelson Nygaard, who has done other work for Acton, being the program manager for it, because that's who Sudbury hired to be the program manager. So anyway, that's just a little background. You might have been able to get some of that. You can also get that information. I'm going to send a chat with the link, or you can just go to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, mapc.org, and look up Making the Connections and read about that program. It's just one effort to improve transportation in a regional way.
Thank you. Any additional, sorry?
No, that's all. That's all. I was going to mention something else with transportation, but I'm going to not right now. I just write to you separately.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from board members?
I just have one question. Franny, for TMCs, are you, are you actually using Uber or Lyft and a third entity taxi company?
Yes. Recently, we signed an agreement with Joanne, Rides by Joanne from Westford. And I think there were conversations with other taxi companies. We, we put out a request for taxi companies who are open to anyone. I know there's a small taxi company in Acton, and I know we'd always be interested in talking to them if they were interested in discussing, being part of it, any resources we can get. And yeah, I think it's Lyft, I think it's Lyft that the company that runs our buses just set up an agreement with, Austin would know if it was Lyft or Uber. Anyway, so yes, specifically, it would be to have people get rides from those services instead of the vans if the vans weren't available.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Himaj?
Hey, Franny. So two questions. One is, it mentions in the memo that we were given that it was, that this was recommended by several committees in the community, including the Transportation Advisory Committee and the Commission on Disabilities. I was wondering if you could elaborate on the different committees, which would help. And then the second question... second question is, I'm kind of piggybacking on Fran's question with, so if buses aren't available, people would use these other options. Are these subsidized options? How does that work? Thanks so much.
I'm leaving our staff in the town and the director of Crosstown Connect to determine the right methods of charging. But the thing that some of the other towns do is they charge the rider about $2, and then they could go up to 10 miles. And if they go beyond that, there's a certain charge. So, it's a combination of subsidy and not. But if it's short enough trips, most or all of it is covered. Most of it is covered. Carlisle found that people didn't start using it right away. When Austin and I have talked, rather than use the method that some towns use of having strict eligibility and uses that their pilot programs are based on, we had talked about wanting to have a more open program, assuming that if somebody had a use, that it was a real use. And from that, collecting the data, we would see, what are those uses? You know, rather than sort of put the structure on it beforehand, which sometimes leads to a program not being used enough. And the first question you had, I'm trying to...
On different committees that have agreed to this and that support it?
Yeah. Well, the Commission on Disabilities, obviously, has a lot of people that we care about who don't drive and who depend on our services. And we want them to be able to live good lives with dignity. And I don't think it's very pleasant to have to tell a dispatcher exactly where you're going, why, you know, I want to go to this place in two days. It would be better to not have to sort of defend your life all the time. And I think that's a way we can help. By having more seamless available transportation for people who don't drive, it would be better for them. So, that's the way it's relevant for the Commission on Disabilities. And the Transportation Advisory Committee has been focused on improving these systems for a long time. So, those are the two local committees that would care about this. I think that actually, we cross with so many, I mean, with the all environmental groups and also the EDC, in wanting to have a more robust system.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all your work with this.
Jim, you had a comment or a question?
No, I do have this cool motion I could read.
Okay. Just before we do that, any other comments from members of the board? Why don't you go ahead and we'll read the motion, and then I'll, and second it, and then I'll just make sure there are no comments from the members of the public.
Okay. I move that the town of Acton, according to Chapter 40, Section 4A of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Sudbury for the purposes of providing additional transportation services through the Making the Connection Pilot Program, and appoint a representative to serve on the Program Steering Committee.
I second.
Thank you to both of you. Any comments from members of the public? Seeing none, we'll vote. Jim, if you could call the roll.
Fran Arsenault?
Aye.
David Martin?
Aye.
Jim Snyder Grant says aye. Himajin Nagareddy?
Aye.
Dean Charter?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Excellent. Item 10, approved letter of support for DCR Urban and Community Forestry Program grant.
So, this is another project that Director York has taken on. And as you know, our capital plan includes a shade tree assessment. And he, along with some other partners here in the organization, are going after this funding to try to help offset the cost of doing that shade tree assessment. So, we're just asking the board to offer its support through a letter of support, probably from the chair, which we can write and have you sign if the board authorizes you to do so.
There's a draft in the packet. I could read it if people want me to read it. But if no one needs me to read it, then after we have some comments from you guys, we can take a motion to authorize me to send such a letter. But first, any comments or questions from the board? Jim?
So, the cover paragraph in the memo we got talks about street trees. But the letter that's drafted here doesn't mention street trees and mentions instead forest management plans. And this phrase is often used to include, you know, things that were probably not thought of in the cover note, like timber harvesting, or removing trees to create habitat, or other active forestry measures. So, I would, I'd recommend that we adjust the letter before you sign it to ensure that the request we're making to the state is about street trees. Or if active forest management is being considered, let's have a separate discussion about that.
So, just to be clear, are we talking about the same thing, this?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Do you know if this forestry plan would allow us to have such wording, or?
The purpose of, for pursuing this funding is not, is to work on a shade tree assessment. So, we'd be happy to make that clear in the letter if that, if that's not clear enough.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Hi, Himaj, you?
Yes. So, I was wondering if you could elaborate on the DCR Urban and Community Forestry Program. I'm not too aware of it. So, some details would be helpful. Thanks.
Yes, Director York is willing to do that.
Yeah. I'm actually learning more and more about it. Something that came up in a conversation during some networking for sort of avarists. And I'm just there to kind of learn that. But it is a, it's a competitive grant that the DCR puts out with sort of the goal of helping sort of the forestry, whether you're urban or, and that. So, I don't know all the ins and outs of all the different types of projects they fund. But I did meet with a representative from the DCR last week. I explained our project of trying to continue our sort of assessment of our street trees, and kind of focusing in on environmental justice areas for this grant opportunity. And under this level two, we did a, we originally in 2018 did a windshield survey. So, essentially, that was sort of a drive-through town, picking up noticeable problems and sort of categorizing all those. We had an inventory where those were. We did an initial sort of small step of a level two, which requires the, to have the avarist actually stop at each tree and kind of do a look of the tree and do an assessment. And what this money would allow us to do is to continue that level of detail, sort of evaluating our street trees much further. We're in the process now of trying to award a contract to an avarist that would utilize the funds that were approved at town meeting. But if we were able to get this grant, we could keep that effort moving next construction season. And it would, it would just give us that more of a leg up of really looking at these trees and knowing whether there's, we just need to prune something, or if they see something a little bit more eye-catching that we really need to address, whether it's more aggressive pruning, or maybe unfortunately a removal if the tree's in a dire state. So, but they, I explained what we're looking to do, and they said that was exactly what they are looking for in projects as far as if we were doing an assessment. So, they were very excited about it. But it is a competitive program. So, we're trying to get, seek a lot of letter of support, show that we're, it's, that we're using this for a lot of information. So, I've, I've been working with the Sustainability Director. I've reached out to EverSource and working with them and our GIS team, because we're trying to, as we do all this, we're trying to leverage our GIS and get it in there. So, we really have a good understanding of all these trees and what's out there, and hopefully, what we can do to protect them.
That was really helpful. Thank you.
I, Dean.
Just to give a little more background on that, the DCR and some of its predecessor organizations, the groups that I worked with for a number of years, they provide a lot of technical support and training opportunities as well. So, they're, they're kind of the, they're like forest rangers, but they're specifically for the urban forest as far as facilitating that kind of work. In the past, we've had tree planting programs that we've gotten grants from DCR for. And, you know, eventually, this is sort of the gold standard to have all of these layers put on GIS and be able to manage the inventory, something that was not possible with paper maps. But now, it's, you know, eventually, if you have something sophisticated enough, you can pull up all the information on every single tree. It's within the public right of way, and you know the species, age, condition. And it's a great management tool, as well as looking at some other interesting things, like if your street tree stock, is it predominant with one or two species, which might be prone to an insect or disease infestation? Or is it a more varied stock? That's the kind of stuff that you can do with this inventory, once you get it all input. So, it's a great management tool, and it's certainly going to make life a lot easier, certainly for the tree ward, and certainly for the generations to come as far as managing the resource.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Jim? If it's not already in your plans, Corey, it'd be great to maybe make it explicit in the grant that we're updating the GIS information, because that could be pricey. I mean, I know that there, there's something, the GIS group is sometimes constrained by the, you know, time and resources they have. And if there's a way of, you know, supporting financially the work of getting that information reflected on the GIS layer, that would be great. The second part is, it's more of a comment to the rest of the board. We've had, you know, over the last year, we've had a number of issues with street trees and development projects and permitting. And getting this data, you know, on our GIS system correctly is a key step to helping avoid those problems. So that if, you know, in early stage of development, a developer can go to our public GIS maps and go, oh, look, there's, you know, here's a 46-inch oak here, and here's, you know, here's a 30-inch, you know, and they'll know, and they might know something about the condition of the trees. It's going to really help identify these issues much earlier on. So, I'm all in favor of this. I'm really glad you're going for this grant.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments? Any comments from the public, either in the room or online? Seeing none, I would take a motion to authorize me to sign a letter of support that focuses on street trees, street trees, as we've discussed.
I'm just jotting some notes down about what you just said, since I'm the clerk. But, so maybe, Fran, this is maybe your opportunity to...
I was going to move on what David just described.
And would someone second?
Oh, I'll second it then.
Okay, excellent. So, in this one, Fran moves, Jim seconds. Any further comments? And Jim, could you call the roll then, please?
Fran Arsenault?
Aye.
David Martin?
Aye.
Jim Snyder Grant says aye. Himajin Nagareddy?
Aye.
Dean Charter?
Enthusiastically, aye.
Yay. Okay, that's an enthusiastic consensus, yeah. Six out of five.
Okay. Item 11, approved North Acton Fire Station solar contracts and payment in lieu of taxes.
Thank you. So, this is an item related to our new fire station, and we're putting solar on the roof as part of the many sustainability best practices we're incorporating in that exciting new project. And Jessica, Attorney Jessica Wall from Town Council's office is here. She's been helping us navigate the necessary paperwork to accomplish this. Jessica, thanks for hanging with us. Could you walk us through what we need, we're asking of the board tonight?
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. If you need me to be on video, I'm happy to do that, too. I know it's a busy night for the board, so we'll keep it short and sweet. So, as John mentioned, you have, oh, sorry, I see.
There you go. Now, thank you.
There we go. That's better. Hi, everybody. Thank you for your time this evening. I really appreciate it. So, as John mentioned, we've been working on the solar contracts for the North Acton Fire Station for several months. They're ready for your review and approval tonight. So, you have in front of you, or you should have in your packets, three documents, a power purchase agreement, a lease, and what's called a pilot, a payment in lieu of tax agreement, and then also just a very short memo from me summarizing what those key terms are. So, you know, the rooftop solar, this fire station has been in the works for a long time. It's, you know, as I understand it, part of Acton's continuing dedication to renewable energy, sustainability, all certainly laudable goals. So, the key terms of the agreements, just to run through them very quickly for you, it's a 20-year term for the contract. They came to us through power options. There's a municipal solar energy collective that helps municipalities purchase and sort of enter into solar contracting. And then we also had a consultant named Beth Greenblatt, who did a wonderful job, sort of verified and kicked the tires a little bit on the pricing and that sort of thing. So, it's a 20-year term. By purchasing power through Select, as opposed to going to the rest of the grid, the town saves in terms of utility costs. There are purchase options for the system at set years throughout the contract. I believe it's years seven, 10, 15, and then the end of 20. There's a process that I can go into more detail if people have questions. And there are other certain safeguards, like performance guarantees for a certain amount of kilowatt hours per year and that sort of thing. So, the town manager and the town assessor have been closely involved in the negotiation of those documents. What we're asking for the board to do this evening is to authorize the town manager to sign the power purchase agreement, the lease, and the pilot, as well as a notice of lease, which is really more of an administrative document for recording purposes, to sign all of those on behalf of the town. And then, we're off to the races. We're, we'll be having a solar-ready roof ready. And as soon as we let Select know, they will be ready to install.
Thank you. Questions or comments from members of the board? Jim?
I'm so excited to see this moving forward. I had a couple of... Questions. Recent solar projects in Acton, like the one at WR Grace, and coupled by the Acton Water District, have specified that panels don't have PFAS coatings, because some, some sort of panels do, some solar panels don't. And keeping PFAS out of our, you know, out of our water, our groundwater is an important goal. So, that seems like a reasonable requirement. I didn't see any mention of PFAS in any of the documents. And I was wondering where in this process, or in which of these documents, or in some other document, would that agreement need to be written down if we wanted to make it?
That's a good question. So, we did not discuss PFAS issues as part of the contract negotiations. But I do think that in some ways, they're covered by the contracts that we have. So, there are provisions that discuss hazardous materials. And typically, we say that, you know, obviously, we're not, the town is not responsible for hazardous materials that are brought onto the site. We could check, select, and see what the component materials are of the panels that they're expecting to use. But in terms of PFAS... But in terms of PFAS, you know, I, I think it's sort of a manufacturing spec question more than anything else. And I, I think they'd be willing to, to try and work with us to address that question.
Okay, that'd be great if it can, if it can be a simple check.
And verification that doesn't need to be written down, that's fine, just as long as we are, we're aware of the issue. I think the other question I have is not really more about, not really a legal question. It's more of a, a question maybe for John or the staff now or future time, which is I'm wondering if storage was considered as part of this project? And if not, why not?
That's a good question. And we considered a lot of things when we were building this North Acton Fire Station. I'm not sure that that's one of the things that we considered. And I think we would do it next time.
Okay. I mean, it might be, I know you have a diesel backup generator plan for the, for the fire station, but to have an alternate, you know, shorter-term backup system for power that, you know, wouldn't need requiring to fire up the diesel might be a sound thing that, yeah, you might want to think of for, for future projects.
That's it. Thanks.
Yeah, I can also jump in on that, the storage question if it's helpful. So I have seen contracts, municipal contracts, where municipalities later on decide to add a battery to an existing solar system. So I don't think that we necessarily have to count that out for now. I have seen that there's a significant sort of market difficulty in getting batteries these days. So in the projects that have batteries or are intended to have batteries, municipalities are facing this choice where we want to get the project online. We want something, but the battery's not here yet. What do we do? So if at a later date, we wanted to add a battery to this project or talk further with Select about that, I think that they would be probably open to doing that.
That's great to hear and to be reminded about the cost, the cost pressures. Thank you. Dean?
Yeah, I think, as I recall, when we were talking about the North Acton Fire Station, I think this question came up, especially in regards to the putting in storage instead of the diesel generator. And I know at, at that point, we're looking at a pretty significant upcharge in cost. Obviously, all of these things change. But I think the cost issue was one that we discussed. The issue of could you get enough capacity? I think typically try to size one of those generators to provide your full capacity for three days, which looks to a really large battery. The other, the other issue that we had, I, it's a fairly congested site out there. So certainly there was a, a discussion had early on, but it just didn't seem like it was feasible. But as prices come down and if it looks like we can get a battery for those short-term situations, you know, some of those short interruptions actually are beneficial as far as exercising the diesel generator. Usually you end up having to put those things on a timer to exercise once a week anyway, just to make sure the thing is still operating. So it's not necessarily a great benefit for those short-term situations, but as things evolve, maybe it will make sense.
If our next fire truck is an EV, we can use the truck's battery. Interesting. Madison West Council has the first EV fire truck. Engine one, I think. But anyway. Other questions or comments? Himogen?
Thank you. So definitely wanted to emphasize, Jim's questions, would love to get the answers on those as well as we have them and as time goes on. The one thing I wanted to ask was, actually, I, I wanted to take you up on your offer to further explain the options for purchasing solar systems in like the different year increments. So you mentioned seven, 10, 15, as well as at the end of the operation. That's what's listed here in the, in the article. So yeah, would love to get your thoughts on that.
Sure. So the, the high points of the purchase option scheme are basically that, you know, at set intervals, the town has an option to purchase the system if it's so, if it wants to do so. Right now, the way that this is structured is that Select owns the system and the town purchases power from the system as it's generated. So the first step is a notice. I believe it's usually a notice from the town saying we'd like to, you know, move forward and evaluate that purchase option. At that point, there's an appraisal process that looks at the value of the system, which sometimes changes over time, depending on what year we're at. And then there's an opportunity to inspect the equipment and for us to evaluate it and look at the operations records, see if everything looks like it's up to snuff. And if, if we're interested, then we move forward and we would purchase it. And we would, you know, revise the contracts accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions or comments? So all we need is a motion to authorize the town manager to, to sign the purchase plan, lease, pilot agreement and notice of lease. Is that right?
Yes, it's four documents, the PPA, the lease, the pilot and a notice of lease.
So I, I would take a motion to authorize the town manager. To sign the power purchase agreement, lease, pilot agreement and notice of lease for the North Acton Fire Station solar contracts.
So moved.
And seconded.
And any further discussion or comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll vote. Jim, if you'll call the roll.
Fran Arsenault?
Aye.
David Martin?
Aye.
Jim Snyder Grant says aye. Himogen Agareddy?
Aye.
Dean Charter?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Excellent.
Excellent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Aye. Item 12, discuss and vote on date of 2022 annual town meeting and town election. So this is really two things and, and probably requires two separate votes. One is setting the date for next year's annual town meeting. If we don't do anything, it'll be the first Monday in April. But we can set it to be something else and I'll talk about that in a second. And, and the second thing is if we want to change on an ongoing basis what the date of the town election and town meeting is. And I believe that requires changes to bylaws. So first, let me explain that it's, it's, there are two reasons to make this change. One is having town meeting be right at the beginning of the fourth quarter of the fiscal year means that we don't have any financial information from the fourth quarter of the fiscal year to make decisions for, for town meeting. And so delaying it by a little bit will allow us to have, have a little bit more information. The, the, the second reason, it gives the town a little bit more time to prep all the financials for town meeting. You know, we start the, the budgeting cycle pretty, pretty early in the fall. This gives us just a little bit more breathing room. We may not, may not be able to start it much later, but when we get down to the end, we often need a little bit more time to coordinate with the FinCom and, and things like that. And we don't have really time for any kind of back and forth. And finally is coordination with Boxborough. Boxborough's, since we have to, you know, two-thirds of our budget goes to the school district, we have to coordinate with, with Boxborough on, or the, the district has to coordinate with both towns as to what the assessment will be. Boxborough's town meeting, I'm pretty sure is the second Monday in May. So having a town meeting the second Monday in, in May, sorry, having a town meeting closer to the second Monday in May would be good. And then, so we, we can just today, if we want, or any day, right? Just set the date of the next annual town meeting. We can just vote tonight and set it to be what we want. We cannot change the date of the election, however, because that requires a bylaw change. And, but what we can do if we want to change the date of the election to be, so let's suppose that we want to change the date of town meeting and we want it the date of the election to be closer to, to the date we set for town meeting, then we can ask town manager and town council to produce the necessary bylaw changes to present to the next annual town meeting to check, change elections, elections on an ongoing basis. If, if that makes sense. And finally, one of the things that we might want to also consider in the bylaw changes is it, for, for, for town elections is to reduce, you know, so this doesn't normally happen. It's normally just a week. But in the pandemic, our lame duck period has been very long. You know, it's been almost three months in the case of both Jim's election and Fran's election. So it took, you know, the lame period was very, very long. And so we might want, also if in, in the bylaw, if we're changing the election bylaws, might want to have some kind of limit to when swearing in would happen. You know, for example, normally the swearing in happens after town meeting is dissolved. But we could say, for example, but not longer than 15 days after the election or not longer than 30 days after the election. So specifically what I was going to propose, because I think it kind of fits our traditions, just as a starting point for our discussions, is to, you know, we normally have our elections on the last Tuesday of March and our town meeting on the first Monday of April. It begins on the first Monday of April. I, I would like to propose that we delay that by a month. And so we have our town elections on the last Tuesday of April and our town meeting on the first Monday of May. That gives us plenty of time before the end of the fiscal year to recover from any problems at town meeting or if we have to delay it, but also puts us pretty close to, to Boxborough and is kind of, you know, is very similar to our, our current traditions. So I'll just open it up for discussions from the, the board again. If we decide to do anything today, it would be two steps. One is we can set the date tonight of the 2022 annual town meeting. And then we can ask town council to make those changes, you know, to draft language to make those changes permanent. So questions, comments? Jim?
One question I had was the, so is this transition possibility of having the swearing in, no, in any case, no more than 15 to 30 days after the election? That seems like a sound thing. Do you know yet whether that's a bylaw change or just a procedure change or what that takes?
I believe that's a bylaw change as well.
Okay.
So the changing the date of the election and changing the swearing in procedures, which is, which is why we couldn't do it with either you or Fran in the years that you guys were elected. Dean?
So I guess the first question I've got, and I, I think I know the answer, would be to the town manager is, you know, is this going to make life easier for all of our staff and our finance people as far as being able to, to adjust? I know in the past, Acton has been unusual in that we have an unusually early town meeting and sometimes it was quite a chase getting things done by early April. So I guess, Mr. Manager, if you'd weigh in first on, is this going to help you and your staff?
Thank you for asking. I think that this year in particular.
Having the extra time would be helpful because we just had town meeting at the end of June and it, you know, and it felt like we started the budget the next week, which we really did. So I think, although I don't believe that I would change our internal timelines for the budget planning, it certainly gives us more time to sort out all the things related to town meeting. So I'd be, I think it'd be helpful for us this year.
Okay, thank you. So I guess my other question is, goes to the bigger issue about.
Moving the election, which obviously it makes sense to have the election fairly close to wherever you decide your town meeting is going to be. But I'm a little skeptical of the idea that if for some reason another pandemic or something like that, if the timeline stretches out quite a bit, I think there's a great benefit in having the select persons that were involved in preparing the articles be available to be able to present those. You could theoretically get a situation where if there's a long period of time you get an election, you get a brand-new selectman that comes in and they've got like four days to prepare to understand everything and be able to present it at a town meeting. So I, I think that, you know, we shouldn't get too freaked out by what's happened the last couple of years because of COVID because that was certainly unusual in our background. And I think it would be very difficult to have a brand-new selectman come in and be ready to make a presentation at town meeting. So I think that whoever on the select board has done the work all the way through should still be available and serving as a selectman when you get into the, the town meeting time. So I, I'd be very skeptical of making that change, but the other issues, I think, make a lot of sense.
Thank you. I just wanted to be, be clear that, that the proposal that I would make would lead the practice as exactly the same unless we delay town.
Meeting out of its normal spot. Right. And then the people who were there originally on the select board could still present. But as, you know, whatever the members of the board want, if we don't want to put a, a limit on the swearing in, that's fine. We can still always just leave the, the laws the way they are and always do the, the swearing in after town meeting is dissolved. Other comments?
This is sort of related, but I was wondering if this would move us away from a two-town meeting a year or move us to a one-town meeting a year?
I don't know. The, the town manager can also comment. I don't think that makes a lot of difference here, right? Because either we have issues for the fall or we don't. You know, we have issues that we don't want to wait a, a full year or we can't, you know, contractually, you know. Last year, for example, it was the, the approval of the purchase of the Great Hill land, which was the driving force for the town meeting. And then once we scheduled the town meeting, we added a half a dozen other things because they were ready to go and we didn't need to wait for the annual town meeting. But if, you know, this year we happen to not have a driving thing, but I think in, in many cases, we do have a, a driving item.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Did we just add a driving thing potentially? I mean, that is, if we need a bylaw change to change the election and that would have to be approved at a town meeting, it seems like then that gives us a motive for having a fall town meeting so that in the spring, we can have elections and town meeting be coordinated.
So in, in my opinion, this is not enough to be the driver to schedule a fall town meeting. It's pretty expensive to do a town meeting. So if we, if we do what we're kind of discussing tonight, in, in 2022, our town meeting would be the first Monday in May, but our elections would remain the last Tuesday in March for just next year. And then at town meeting at the first Monday in May, one of the articles would be to change the bylaws, to change in perpetuity the election date to the last Tuesday of April and the town meeting to the first, annual town meeting to the first Monday in May. Dean?
My question on that is if it's not necessarily just bylaw, but is it a charter change as well? In which case you could end up.
Having to have it voted at a general election after the town meeting takes the action. So that's something that town manager, town council could weigh in on. So it might, might take a little bit longer. I remember that was a situation you ran into. take a little bit longer. I remember that was a situation we ran into when we changed the name of the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board.
Yes, and if that's the case, it would take two cycles to do that. Right. But I looked at both the bylaws-
Both the bylaws and the charter, and I don't see any place in the charter that it says this. So, I don't believe it's a charter change. I believe it's only bylaw changes. Now, town council is the final word on that, not me. But I, in just looking through, my belief right now is that to change the date of the election is a bylaw change. Other comments? Himaja?
Thank you. For me, I support this. One thing I was thinking about was, you know, what time of year could we schedule a town meeting to at least try to increase engagement? I know June tends to be a pretty busy time for people. That's when school ends, that's when, you know, folks start going on vacations. So, I think that it would be advisable, kind of, not to go beyond that. But I think that a current schedule of April with elections, and then May with a town meeting, I think that would make sense. And I think that we could potentially, hopefully, get more engagement that way. And I think that, for all the reasons that everyone stated, I think that it's a good move. So, I'm in support.
Okay. And what is everyone's feelings on Dean's comments of-
Not putting in a limit for when people would be sworn in. So, we want, do we want to just leave it the way it is, that people get sworn in when town meeting is dissolved? Or do we want to put in an upper limit on that?
I think Dean's point is well-taken about having continuity of the board up until town meeting. I mean, I can see other bad situations, too, where, you know, a new board decides to change its support of foreign articles, you know, which would really confuse the process. So, I can see, you know, wanting to keep that same board in place through town meeting.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah, I agree. I think that, exactly, for the sake of continuity, and for the sake of making sure that at town meeting, it's, you know, we're presenting on things that, for example, like that previous, like, board had worked on. I think it makes sense, yeah. But I do want to ask Fran and Jim, if you felt like there were any additional difficulties with that long waiting time period, that could potentially sway us in another direction. But, I mean, for me, just based on what I've heard, it seems to make sense to kind of keep the current select board in place until town meeting, and then kind of swearing in our new members.
Jim?
Going on, and, you know, sort of, given preparation, oh, you know, start looking at the committee lists, and start, you know, start thinking about these issues. And in some cases, in one case even, being brought into, being updated on what was going on in executive session. So, I think with appropriate action from the chair, that it can be managed really well.
Okay. Any other comments?
Speaking from my experience, I love the idea of continuity, and I know that I wouldn't have been able to present at the first town meeting in my new position. However, I do feel that the lame duck period was way too long. So, I can see putting a time limit on it, but I'm on the fence about that, because continuity is important, too.
So, I'm not hearing overwhelming support for the, you know, putting a time limit on. Because even, Fran, you were kind of most supportive, and you seemed to have pros and cons.
Well, the idea that Dean brought up of presenting at town meeting, I would not be prepared to do that. Although I was very familiar, I wouldn't be able to speak to warrants, or, you know. And hopefully, that was just a COVID thing, and-
It doesn't happen most years.
Exactly.
Let's hope it doesn't happen next year. Okay. So, I'm hearing that we leave that off the table, at least for now, maybe forever. So, I think there are two motions here, then. And the first motion is to set the date of the next annual town meeting to May 2, 2022, Monday, May 2, 2022. I would take such a motion, if someone wants to make it.
Just taking notes, but I'm happy to make that motion, that the next annual town meeting would be, oh, but there's a really important thought from John, that I would rather hear from before I make the motion.
Just to note, we've been coordinating with the school district about the availability of the facilities in May, and I don't believe the 2nd is a date that they said was going to work. Mark has the most recent update from the school district. As you would imagine, May is a busy time for programming, you know, theater and everything else that happens there. And so, we're trying to work with them.
The choices were May 9th or May 16th, after the juggling that they did with their events.
So, what about on an ongoing basis, Mark? I mean, how would we do that on an ongoing? So, May 9th is the date of Boxboro's, which is, which may be inconvenient for school district staff.
Right. And I believe what they are planning, if we chose May 9th, was to split up the administration and the school committee between the two towns.
You've got a possibly relevant comment from the audience.
Go to a podium, please. John Peterson, do you know anything about the school district?
John Peterson, 6 Jackson Drive. So, I'm speaking as an Acton resident. I'm not speaking to represent the school committee, although I might know some things about the school committee. The, first of all, you know, I think it's great to have the additional time. You know, I mentioned a couple of other things that are impacted by delaying town meeting. One is that we'll have cleared the snow and ice removal part of the budget, and that uncertainty will be gone. The other thing that, you know, there are a lot of things that lead up to the budget. One of those is setting the insurance rates and the health insurance trust. This is additional time to do that. So, I think every element of the whole budgeting process will benefit from the additional weeks. You know, I think there was, you know, some active discussion, and I talked to Adam Klein, the chair of the school committee, on the subject of, you know, would it be better to have the town meetings on the same week or on different weeks? And there are pros and cons either way. My personal view is that, to the extent that this is a little bit of an experiment to see how it goes, and if it goes well, then we can, you know, do this in perpetuity. And if it goes badly, then we'll try something different, you know, in subsequent years. I actually think this is the year to try and do them together. From a school committee perspective, the downside is, normally, you know, Acton school committee members would attend Boxboro Town Meeting and support their presentation of budget, and vice versa. The reality is, for everybody who's been there, is that we're just pretty faces. We have no functional role, other than to sit there during the presentation. So, I think that that isn't a problem. It does, of course, mean that we would have to somehow coordinate between Acton and Boxboro to do the schools one night in Boxboro and another night in Acton. A lot of times in Acton, we have the schools on the second night, you know, so that it would be a day certain anyway. So, that seems to me to be not such a big problem. So, you know, as Mark mentioned, I think the days that they know are okay for this year. And then, obviously, because the calendar for everything, you know, is very complicated and interacts, you know, once this gets done, if future calendars can be impacted, my suggestion would be to try and do the synchronized town meetings this year. If it works, great. If it doesn't work, next year, you can do the other thing.
Yeah, I'm a little, I don't know. For me, I'm kind of, I think it's awkward to have them on the same day, but I'm okay doing that, if that's when the facilities are available.
I think when we moved town meeting into June last year, you know, there still was some coordination, but it wasn't as bad, because school was ending, graduation was taking place, we just had to get around those. With the expectation that town meeting was going to be on its normal date in April, the schools made plans and scheduled things for May. And so, to change that now, they had to do a lot of juggling in their calendar, and had actually offered us time in June, because everything was, again, over with for the school year. So, they've done some work on their calendar, and offered those two sections of May for your consideration.
So, if, go ahead, Himaja.
Yeah, sorry. I was wondering if you could clarify what the other dates were. So, the 9th was mentioned, was the 16th also mentioned as an option?
Yes. So, the next year, that's the 2nd Monday and 3rd Monday in-
May. Do people have preferences between the 2nd Monday, same as Boxboro, or the 3rd Monday, a week after Boxboro? Jim?
I think my preference would be the 3rd, the May 16th, for the following reasons. One is that we haven't done Acton and Boxboro town meetings on the same time at the same date. And I'm just concerned we're going to run into some resource problem, or some timing problem. And to avoid that, why not move to May 16th? And the second reason would be, it seems like we were, we've been talking about the advantages of moving our town meeting a little bit later. So, hey, this is even a little bit more later. So, it seems good all around.
Is that, just by nods, does that sound good to people? Okay. So, then, the first thing is, I would take a motion to make our next town meeting Monday, May 16, 2022.
I'm happy to make that motion.
Fran, you're up.
I second.
Thank you. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Let me just see if anybody from the public is, has a hand raised to make a comment. Seeing none, we can vote?
Fran Arsenault?
Aye.
David Martin?
Aye.
Jim Snyder-Grant says aye. Himaja Nagareddy?
Aye.
Dean Charter?
Aye.
That's it.
And then, I would take a second motion to ask town council and town manager to draw bylaw changes, to make, before I finish that, actually. If we're having the town meeting be the 3rd Monday in May, do we want the town elections to be the 2nd Tuesday in May? First Tuesday in May?
Second makes sense to me. It would be certainly an E, I mean, the research to do, the bylaw changes, I'm sure would be pretty much the same, whether it was, you know, 2nd Tuesday or 1st Tuesday.
Yes, and it has to come back to us to go on to a warrant, anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
So, we'd just be asking them to draft the language at this point.
Yeah.
I think the 2nd is good, too. 2nd Tuesday.
Okay. I would take a motion to ask the town manager and town council to draft the bylaw changes required to make our elections be the 2nd Tuesday in May, and town meeting be the 3rd Monday in May.
So moved.
I second.
Thank you, Fran. Okay. Any further comment, or comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll vote. Jim, if you'll call the roll, please.
Right now, I'm feeling the awesome power of the select board. Fran Arsenault?
Aye.
David Martin?
Aye.
Jim Snyder-Grant says aye. Himaja Nagareddy?
Aye.
Dean Charter?
Aye.
We act as one.
Thank you. The ARPA presentation, John?
I've been very much looking forward to this presentation. I even made some final adjustments during the meeting tonight, and then my computer just completely blew up.
Oh, no.
So, I would appreciate if you, would you consider taking the next item first?
Sure, because that'll take a little bit of discussion.
And I gotta sort out my IT stuff here. Thank you.
Okay. So, then, item 14 is a proposed resolution for, to make the 2nd Monday in October Indigenous Peoples' Day. And there's a draft declaration in the packet. That draft declaration was updated in the early afternoon today. It didn't have major updates. The biggest update was to remove the Nishoba from the declaration, because Nishoba is really more of a place than it is a people. So, there's detail there, and we can discuss the detail. But the declaration as it exists, if people want, I can read it, or you can read it on your own in the packet. And so, if someone wants me to read it, just say so. Other than that, I just opened it up for discussion. This declaration would make, like I said, the 2nd Monday in October Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day. Dean, please.
So, you know, not to address the declaration itself, but-
I've got sort of a process question here. I would suggest that we should take an opportunity to see if there's any public input, and go through a process, maybe delay this a week or two, so that folks have got a chance to read the declaration, understand it. I'm looking back at the problem that occurred when the school district decided to end the colonial as the mascot. And whether you agree with that decision or not, I think everybody agrees that it was poorly handled, and created a great deal of dissension, just because it got sprung on people, and no one had a chance to provide any input. So, I think it's important that we allow people to take, to provide input. This could get very emotional, or not. But I think we really need to make sure that the public is up to speed on this, and is agreeing with what's being proposed. Another example, most recently, is this year with the goal setting. We specifically delayed our goal-setting meeting, so that we could give the public a chance to provide input. So, I would be opposed to voting this thing tonight. I think that we should give folks a chance to understand it, and come back to a subsequent meeting. And if people have feelings one way or another, let's hear it. I think it's always important to get more public input, rather than less. The other, the other, the other point that I would raise on this is that there's a lot of wording in there about instructing the Acton-Boxboro Regional School District to do thus and such. And certainly, again, as a result of the issues with the colonial, we were told no uncertain terms by the school district. They reminded us of the fact that we are, that they are politically independent of us, and that they will not necessarily take any instructions from us. So, I question the necessity for putting that in there, especially since it was rebuffed, and most recently in the past, by the school district. You know, finally, to the body of the document, I think there's probably a lot of editing that could be done there, that would make it less contentious and confrontational. But I kind of leave that to the public. But I do think that it's important that we have public input in this, before we take a vote on it as a board.
Okay. Just-
The decision for tonight, we could- The decision for tonight, we could, so I'm just thinking about the lead-up time to the second Monday in October, which is less than a month away. So we could do nothing this year, and as Dean suggests, take input and make this declaration effective next year. We could declare that just this year is Indigenous Peoples' Day and then consider the longer declaration for future years. Or we could move forward with this declaration. So we could, you know, kind of do it not at all this year, temporarily this year, or the full thing. Anybody else have comments? Himaja?
I personally am ready to vote on it now. I read through it. I thought it was really well-written. And in terms of respecting the autonomy of the school committee, I thought it did a pretty good job personally. I see that the only places where we really mention the school district is that in, I don't know what paragraph it is, it's on the second page, it says, "Resolved that the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District are encouraged to join in this observance with appropriate exercises and/or instruction in all schools around the time of Indigenous Peoples' Day." So I think that, you know, that's pretty open-ended, and that's up to the discretion of the schools. But personally, I think that recognizing, you know, Indigenous Peoples' Day is really important. I think that it's an important step for us towards our journey of equity here in Acton. And a lot of places, as indicated in the resolution, have already moved forward with recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. I also go to school in a place where we recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I, you know, it definitely means a lot to our community. And so I think it'll mean a lot to Acton as well. So I think we should go ahead and vote for it, but would love to hear other people's input as well.
Thank you. Jim, you have your hand up?
I think it's the first step in recognizing indigenous people in our local area, and it recognizes the ongoing impact colonialism has had on them. And we need to celebrate many cultures, and there are many cultures in the indigenous, you know, people world. Sorry, I, it's getting late. There's many cultures to celebrate, and I think that this is the first step in doing that. I also kind of waffled around the school paragraph, but Himaja had, you know, opened my eyes and thought that it wasn't decision-making for the school committee or, so I thought it's a great statement. Sorry.
Okay, I'll just say one thing about the school paragraph. If we didn't like the school paragraph, we could just delete the school paragraph from the declaration and still pass the declaration. So if you guys have that, you know, since we haven't made a motion yet, we can just, whenever someone makes a motion, we can make the motion to have the statement with any change that, you know, anybody who would like to make, would like to make, whoever makes the motion. I also want to say that in the second-to-last paragraph, it says that we'll consult with local indigenous groups to develop a land acknowledgement to be read at the beginning of town meeting. In an earlier draft of this, I had drafted a land acknowledgement, and Jim suggested that we might want to consult with indigenous groups before coming up with that land acknowledgement. So I deleted the draft land acknowledgement from the draft declaration, and so that doesn't, it just says in here now that we should develop one to be read at the beginning of town meeting. Just for everybody's information. Are you done pondering?
For now. So I think there is great value in setting us for a period of, you know, deliberation and communication and education about these issues. I also think there's great value in making a declaration of intent now. So to do both, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about language that would suggest that we, that we, that we've, that we vote to make progress on declaring Indigenous Peoples' Day and start a process of, you know, deliberation and consultations. So we leave off the details and we declare that, you know, we're gonna, we like this idea, and we know that, you know, talking with the public is going to be helpful in making it, I mean, one of the reasons for doing this sort of thing is exactly education and communication. So making it a slower process that has more chance for consultation seems like a good idea to me.
So you're suggesting not making any change for 2021?
Right.
And repeating the process tonight, but with not, with no actual change for 2021?
Right, yeah. To just to make a declaration tonight that we are headed in this direction for 2022, and we're going to start a period of deliberation.
Okay. If there, I'll let Dean go, and then any other members of the board, and then I'll take public comments. Dean, please.
Yeah, I think that Jim's got a good point here. I really think that it's important that the public weigh in on this, decide it's a good idea. You know, certainly Columbus and his supporters have been getting beaten up pretty badly, but I'm, you know, I think that they should be given an opportunity to make a defense. You know, I might very well be prepared to vote in favor of changing the name. It's just I think that it's important that we have public input when we make something that, you know, this is kind of a high-profile decision that we're making. And I think that if we have an opportunity for discussion, then I think it's more likely that you're going to have public buy-in on the whole idea. So, you know, the problems that Columbus and the early explorers brought along started 500 years ago, and I think, you know, changing at this point is not going to make much difference if we end up with a better process at the end of it. So I think a go slow and, you know, an intent on our part to look at this and embrace the idea, I think is something that I could support.
Thank you. And Himaja?
So I do respect the importance of gathering community feedback on making a decision that affects our community, but every single year that we delay this causes more harm to a lot of our indigenous communities here in town and in our community. So I wonder if, I mean, we have another select board meeting scheduled for September 20th. I understand that this is a huge time crunch, but is there any way we can find a way to gather public input and then vote on this based on that and make an informed decision on the 20th in time for Indigenous Peoples' Day in October? Or would that be too close of a timeline? Because ideally, we do want to make a decision this year.
So we're planning our ARPA feedback next week? I don't know if that precludes this or not. So it might be a little bit of a late meeting if we did that, but let me take public comment now that, for the people that have their hands up, and then, and then we can discuss whether we want to, you know, I think we now know the range of options open to us, you know, do something tonight, do something next week, have a longer process. So it sounds like no one's saying not at all. It's like we might have, you know, something like next week with, for further notice or, excuse me, or as Jim suggested, begin the process now. But Matt, if you could let the people who are online speak, please?
We've got Deborah Sines up first.
Thank you. Couple things. One is that I think, I take Dean's point that public input is important, and I think that Jim's, I mean, Himaja, I think, you know, it would be great if we could do all this that fast, but honestly, I think it's unrealistic. And I think that the notion of actually doing some consultation with indigenous peoples' groups before a statement, you know, like a real change in a statement is crafted, makes a lot of sense. And in the public discourse, I will say that I have heard the notion expressed from some, from some indigenous people that, for instance, a land acknowledgement absent other action rings kind of hollow. So I'm just going to pass that on as one idea that we might learn more about before we come up with some sort of final thing. I am utterly in support of changing this to Indigenous Peoples' Day, don't get me wrong, but I do think that some consultation and public engagement with this is a good idea. And to be perfectly honest, I think that the document that I'm looking at right here does need some editing. I could go into detail, I'm not going to bore you with it now, but those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Carol Lafferty.
Hi there, Carol Lafferty, 33 Nishoba Road. Thanks so much for taking this on. I think every opportunity to make Acton a more inclusive community is something that we should, you know, work expediently toward. I think that adding this to the agenda and seeking public input, which we're providing right now, and then cherry-picking it off to seek more public input, passively condones the celebration of someone that I do not believe Columbus has many supporters in our community. I think that what Debra just mentioned of communicating with the indigenous population within our town is a wonderful idea, and perhaps the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Council might be able to fill that role pretty well. But I think that, you know, this is not a new movement. This movement started in 1992 by the indigenous population in California. It's been a long time coming, and, you know, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to continue honoring this man, and, you know, we all know why. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think that's all, right, Matt?
That's all that I see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Jim?
If it would be helpful, I have some language that matches the notion I was talking about before, if we wanted a motion for discussion.
Why don't you just read it first before, and before making the motion?
Okay.
Allow us to digest it.
Okay. So let's imagine that I say this, that we move that the select board declare that we are in favor of declaring a, ooh, that's two uses of the word declare. Okay, already issues here. Move that the select board declare that we're in favor of making a...
Second Monday in October.
Yeah, second Monday in October, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and that we launch a multi-month process of consultation and mutual education.
Are people okay with that? So what that would mean is, you know, we move forward with the process, but we won't make a change this year?
I'll shake a minute.
Well, it's not a motion quite yet, so...
He had me pretend to make the motion so we could discuss it.
I want to make sure that we have consensus about what we want to do first, and, you know, just a general consensus, and then we can move forward. Himaja or Fran?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, you can.
So what would outreach look like? What, I mean, I know reaching out to indigenous groups, I know that, what that would look like. What would reaching out to the community look like?
I'm having it, oh, sorry, I could answer. What I was thinking of is that we would have it on our agenda at various times, at least, you know, a couple of times over the next year, informed by the consultation with indigenous groups, so we could, you know, there could be a little presentation, like, oh, here's what we've learned, you know, about this, about this, about this idea and about the potential language, and then take public comment on that.
I was thinking about before our next meeting, but that's, I see where you're coming from.
So, I mean, in Jim's proposal, I mean, it would be kind of like how we do anything. You know, someone makes a presentation, and we hear from the, you know, the public, their comments and questions. The, if we wanted to do something faster, like Himaja was implying before, we could try to do that just next week. So, you know, I, it depends on what we want to do here. Anybody else have a comment, or should I have Jim just make his statement as a motion? Himaja?
So we'd love to get people's thoughts on this, but I wonder if we can pitch a motion?
So one would be Jim's motion if this hypothetical first one fails. And I would say the first motion would be either to approve this, this statement as it is, or with, or at the next select board meeting, after giving people enough time to chime in about their thoughts, in order for it to be enacted by this Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 2021. Would people be okay with that, with me pitching a first motion, seeing if it passes? If it doesn't, then we'll go to Jim's motion? Or where do people feel on that?
We could do that. Let me say, Himaja, one other thing that we could do is that we could really have a proclamation, which we could pass tonight, or you could draft for next week, to just say we recognize indigenous people, right, without declaring Indigenous Peoples' Day, and then work that into the process. Right, so I'm just pointing that out as a possibility. So, you know, what are the, what are the feelings of the board members here? What Himaja, if I, correct me if I don't say this right, Himaja's suggesting that we aim towards getting this done next week? If people are not in favor of that, then we go through a process like what Jim is proposing. So maybe just with a thumbs up or thumbs down, who would be in favor of trying to get this done next week? One, two? So that leaves, that leaves me as the, you know, I drafted this, so, you know, I guess I would, I would like to get it done, but I'm sensitive to the, you know, people wanting to have, have input. So Himaja, would some kind of proclamation work for you that, for this year only? And then, you know, which you could draft, and then we vote on next week, and then we move forward with Jim's process?
I would be okay with that if we got the general sense that we don't want to make a decision on this by next week for October 2021. So if we, so with Jim's motion, it would be ultimately to potentially proclaim Indigenous Peoples' Day for October 2022. If that's where people are leaning, then absolutely. I would make a proclamation, at least stating that us as a select board are recognizing October 11th as Indigenous Peoples' Day. But ideally, if we could push it this year, that would be great, but again, this is a democracy, and I support that, so would... But again, this is a democracy and I support that, so would.
So without me, it's tied. So I could break the tie. But I think in this situation, it's important that. We kind of be of one voice, right? It's a pretty tepid endorsement to have a 3-2 vote for Indigenous Peoples' Day. I don't think that's what happens, you know, there's, you know, there are some Massachusetts towns listed in the declaration, and that's not a complete list. There are many towns now that, in Massachusetts, and never mind the country, that have Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, but in most cases, it's a unanimous vote by their select boards or town councils. So I would say we hold off and we do Jim's vote. And maybe you and I could just chat about a proclamation for next week. Would that be okay?
I absolutely respect that and absolutely I will draft a proclamation and we can work together on the wording of that so that we can present it at the next select board meeting.
And is that okay with anybody else?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so Jim, if you could read your words. Ask a motion.
Sure. Like to move, I move that the select board declare that we're in favor of making the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day and that we launch a process of consultation and mutual education over the next year with the intent of preparing a formal declaration during the upcoming year.
If I could provide a small amendment to that, if we could add, like specifically reaching out to indigenous communities so that way we can make a really strong, really well-informed statement that can go into effect next year.
And if I could also offer a friendly amendment, when you're done writing there, to delete your first over the next year. Because that indicates that we, that it's going to take a year. And whereas your second one says that basically it has to be done for next year, right? And so we could get it done in six months or something. Are you okay with that as well?
Yes, I think both changes are good.
Since it wasn't seconded, you have the opportunity to read it again.
Yes. So Himajah, the way I wrote this down, but I wanted to check with you before I read it out loud. Launch a process of consultation with indigenous communities and Acton residents.
Yeah, let me do that.
Okay, okay. With the intent of preparing a formal declaration during the upcoming year. Okay.
Okay, would you read the whole thing once more?
Sure, absolutely.
And then someone can second.
Okay. Move that the select board declare that we are in favor of making the second Monday in October Indigenous Peoples' Day and that we launch a process of consultation with indigenous communities and Acton residents with the intent of preparing a formal declaration during the upcoming year.
I second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further comment? Jim, could you call the roll then, please? Sorry to keep you busy.
It's my job. Fran Arseneault.
Aye.
David Martin.
Aye.
Jim Snyder Grant says aye. Himajah Nagareddy.
Aye.
Dean Charter.
Aye.
We did it again.
Thank you all. John, how's your computer? Okay, the ARPA process.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm pleased to present tonight the American Rescue Plan Act Needs Assessment and Community Engagement Process for the board to consider. So the American Rescue Plan Act, which we refer to as ARPA from here on out, was signed by President Biden in March. And it was $1.9 trillion intended to combat the COVID-19 pandemic and help communities across the country respond and recover. There was money in there for public health, vaccines, helping for vulnerable populations, housing stabilization, economic recovery, and direct assistance for families and individuals. Counties across the country receive direct federal aid. We're part of Middlesex County, so we contribute, we receive some of that as well. Cities with populations below 50,000 like ours receive funds based on the percentage of the state's population not exceeding 75% of its most recent budget. And we can use funding from this program through the end of calendar year 2024. So when you look at the direct municipal appropriation that Acton received with $2.4 million and the county reallocation that we received from Middlesex County, since it's not an actual functioning county, the town of Acton has access to allocate $7,72,733 from the ARPA funding. So that right there is, it seems like a lot of money and it's a really, it's an important opportunity for this community to recover and grow and address some priorities that we've had, that the select board has identified through its goal setting and that we were aware of based on community needs in general. So, and in the goal-setting process this summer, the board set as a short-term goal to establish a process for allocating ARPA funds that includes community engagement. So this presentation tonight is responsive to that select board goal. So the funding for our can be used in general categories, supporting public health, replacing public sector revenue, investing in water and sewer infrastructure, addressing negative economic impacts, providing premium pay to certain essential workers, and broadband infrastructure. To dig deeper into what that means, public health response would be things related to COVID-19, such as vaccinations and contact tracing, quarantining, and other costs related to how we've responded as a community. It also includes mental health, substance abuse, crisis intervention. Public sector revenue loss is actually funding that's helped to communities recover where revenues didn't come in as well as we thought they would. It lets the cities and towns run those services and supplement the revenue that was lost. Economic impacts, this is where they want you to invest in households, support for unemployed workers, benefits for families from COVID-19 victims, support small businesses, rebuilding public sector capacity. And then premium pay is to provide a funding to low-wage workers who had to work throughout the pandemic, who didn't have access to good wages at that time. Water and sewer infrastructure, that would be upgrading facilities, whether it's transmission, distribution, or storage. It's, you know, sewer systems, stormwater systems. Equity-focused services are things that we've already been doing here, like rental assistance and helping people with pay for education that they can't afford. And then broadband is connecting last-mile broadband to households that don't have access to it. That's not, that's not a huge problem here in Acton, but there are some areas without broadband. There's several things that aren't eligible to be used by ARPA. You can't use it to reduce taxes in town. You can't use it to pay off your pension fund, for example, and reduce that liability. And there's several other things that you can't do. You can't build roads and bridges also. So with that information, we had an internal working group and we really looked at developing a needs assessment. We wanted to see, okay, these are the eligibility criteria. What things do we already know about based on our short-term and long-term goals established by the select board? Our capital improvement plan that we just developed for the next 10 years of what we need to invest in as an organization? What things can we identify right from there that we know would be a priority investment? Then we did some stakeholder engagement, speaking with some of our partners in the community. We spent time with the regional school district, understands needs that they may have. We talked with the water district. We talked with other stakeholders in the community. And the internal working group included folks from multiple departments throughout the organization. And we worked together to put together a list of things that we could, we believe would be eligible investments that the community needs to use ARPA funding for. So to walk through, just over, general overview, I mentioned there was $7 million available. We identified $12 million in needs, which is not an uncommon process with a needs assessment. I think the first step is identifying the needs and then determining how to prioritize those needs. And in this case, we're going to recommend that we incorporate community feedback to help with that process. So just to run through some of the projects identified, there were 43 projects that we've listed here and this presentation will be published afterwards for folks to review. But there's something I'll get to in a moment, but we're recommending using some of the funding to cover a local receipts shortfall in '22. We're recommending considering an investment in the Asa Island House to create a cultural center with that. The school district is looking to do some telephone system upgrades. They wanted to replace revenue related to extended day in kindergarten. We want to look at narrow accessibility improvements, such as replacing the damaged boardwalk over the pond and do some other ADA compliant walkways to make the facility more inclusive and usable. We want to look at using some of this funding to acquire new open spaces and improving existing open spaces, investing in some town-wide initiatives for sustainability, such as electric vehicle pilots, solar arrays, energy efficiency improvements to public facilities, all to advance our efforts towards net zero. We also want to continue to support virtual and hybrid meetings like this meeting tonight. For water, sewer, and broadband, we identified the need to construct a sewer main extension across the Route 2 bridge to provide sewer to the Acton Housing Authority project, where they're building a senior housing facility. Look at stormwater improvements related to the Fort Brook Pond and the dam on River Street. This is something we discussed earlier related to Great Road. There's a strong interest from the business community in looking at feasibility of creating some sewer capabilities for Great Road. And so this would be an opportunity to invest in that research and feasibility study work. The water district is replacing all of their water mains in Kelly's Corner as part of our major infrastructure project that will start in less than a year from now. And they had requested that we consider helping support their water main project, so there's funding in here to consider. And there's a small stretch of Corey Road that is cut off from the electric and broadband grid. And we're considering that is a need for the board to look at. The next category is negative economic impacts. One item here we think would help with businesses and getting them working and more effectively is making our online system, our permitting system, easier for them to navigate. Many communities have an online permitting system. We do not have one that's available to businesses and we think that would really help. We think, and one of the select board goals this year was to make sure that Gardner Field Phase 1 is completed. And we believe that using this funding, we could make an investment in Gardner Field to ensure that the parking lot and related improvements are completed and also fold in some streetscape improvements and parking improvements on Mass Ave itself that will help the business community in that area. We think there's funding, a funding need for constructing a community recreation facility, including a dog park at 362 Main Street. There was a talk about some sort of park structure between the dog park and the housing authority, and this would be a good resource to help further that project and design. Again, more implementation of local rapid recovery program recommendations on Great Road, looking at financial incentives for businesses to install EV chargers at their parking lots in town, and looking at doing an update to our Complete Streets Plan, which was created when our policy was approved several years ago. But it was only a five-year plan, so we'd like to do a new five-year plan. And then this is something that was in the capital plan that I think would really help with supporting our business, and that's developing a public art plan and including public art in community spaces to encourage pedestrian activity in business districts. Supporting public health response, there are several needs identified there. Improving air quality on our public facilities by investing in HVAC improvements. We'd like to look at hiring a full-time licensed social worker to support Acton residents. There's a need for permanent outdoor learning spaces at all of our schools. The new twin school, their outdoor space is being incorporated in, but I think the district is looking for support in building those in the other schools. We, of course, need more public health supplies and mitigation services to help both the town and the school district with our response to COVID. The district is looking at a social emotional screener and related curriculum. We want to expand and improve our outreach for public health. The library is looking to create a curbside service that requires some equipment investment. We want to look at creating an outdoor meeting space next to town hall. If you've been to town hall lately, you know, we're taking up six or four or five parking spaces for an outdoor meeting space. We'd like to create one that doesn't take away parking and have it next to town hall. We want to look at creating best practices manuals for pandemics and hope that we never need to use it. And then with equity-focused services, we think that there's a, it's eligible for us to make some investments in rehabilitating or constructing affordable housing units to help Acton families. Developing qualifying grants for tuition-free all-day kindergarten and qualifying grants for extended day programming at the school district. We want to try to continue the emergency rental assistance program. There's program needs for free after-school tutoring. The food programs at the schools are still in need of some funding to cover those. We want to continue the childcare subsidies. They've been very successful over the last six months. We want to develop some workshops and programs related to mental health, wellness, and equity and empathy. We want to look at developing a youth council program to facilitate youth engagement at local government and provide expanded opportunities for participation in decisions being made at the local level. And we want to look at a pilot program to provide universal access, to ensure equal access to public recreational facilities and programs and techniques. Again, with premium pay, there aren't any proposals that we have considered in this category. And with any funding from the federal government, there's always a provision that allows for administrative costs. In the case of bringing in $7 million and making sure that it's spent appropriately, we believe that it would be helpful to have a grant administrator procurement officer to help support that effort. And we'd like to continue contracting with a financial consultant to serve as an audit function as well. So that's $12 million worth of needs identified for $7 million. And, you know, I think, so that's just what we were able to come up with, with the internal stakeholders and, you know, understanding needs based as what we know. But what we're proposing is to ask the select board to include a community engagement process so that tonight we would present this and then we would suggest that there be a public comment period that starts tonight and goes for several weeks or up to a month. And then have the board meet a few times in the meantime to review initial feedback. And then I would be prepared to work with the board on a final recommendation in October. I think the goal, a goal for me and from the staff level is to try to work on this ARPA funding and how the town wants to invest it before we start the FY23 budget process. I think it's going to be an involved year with the budget. And I think having the priority investments already understood and finalized before the budget would really help, I think, everyone going forward. So the proposed, you know, the process, the community engagement process that we're proposing is a meeting tonight with this initial presentation. I'd like to do the same show again tomorrow night to the finance committee. And then I've already talked with the chair and he'd like to hold a listening. talked with the chair, and he'd like to hold a listening session, a public input sessions, very similar to the public input session that the board held for goal setting, where, you know, there'd be time, as much time as needed, for people to give all of their ideas and input and suggestions for ways that they think this funding could be spent. And then an October 4th meeting could be used to deliberate or discuss any feedback received to date, and then again on the 18th, I hope that we could move forward in making some decisions. We have developed a draft survey. The way that we think that, the way that we think that the Select Board could receive input is two ways, but people could email selectboard@actonma.gov, or I think it's actually sb@actonma.gov, and that would give people an opportunity to share their thoughts with the full board. And then we could also publish a survey if the board thinks it's a good idea as early as tomorrow to help give another opportunity for people to give direct feedback on those 43 items and give people an opportunity to add additional items in each of the categories if they would like to. So that's the community engagement process. And so the steps that I would like the board to consider is first, to be able to use the funding, the board has to formally accept it. That can be accomplished through a motion to accept the funding. And then I'd ask the board to consider endorsing the community engagement process that I've outlined, and then I have a request for you to consider as it relates to allocating some of the funding before we start talking about spending the $7 million. So, as I mentioned, one of the eligible uses for this funding is for revenue replacement, and we're recommending that the board consider allocating $400,000 of this ARPA funding to help support the FY22 budget. And the reason for that is that in the end of the FY21 budget, we fell short in local receipts by about $400,000. And that wasn't a problem for operations. We were able to deliver town services, and it was not an issue. But where it was an issue was with the DOR, because the DOR says, okay, when you budget for FY22, you can't budget any more than what you received in '21. And so since we had level funded our revenue budgets from '21 to '22, we need to make an adjustment to our revenue budget for '22. This ARPA program was created and designed to offset these revenue deficits so that there would be no interruption in services in communities across the country, even though there was an anticipation that there would be some revenue accounts that fell short. And so it's very much an eligible use, but it's something that we're hoping that the board considers. I do have a memo in the packet with a little bit more detail from our finance director, and I look forward to any comments or questions.
Thank you very much, John. I'd just like to say a couple things before we get into other comments. Just so, I just want to kind of reiterate the process a little bit. Really, we get public input from three sources, verbally in a listening session next week, plus the survey, plus people can email us. And at the end of the process, in our October 4th and October 18th meetings, it's really going to be up to us to balance the input we've received from the public, from the finance committee, requests for the schools and equity with the schools, and coordination with Boxborough in funding the schools, the schools' requests, of the priorities of the town manager, and our own priorities. So at the end, we have to take this input from about half a dozen sources, including ourselves, and figure out what we're going to fund. For members of the public filling out this survey, I would strongly encourage people to bullet vote. By that, I mean to vote for only their highest priorities. If you read through this list, there's not too many things on this list that you're going to say, oh, that was, you know, I would never want to spend money on that, you know, I would never want to spend money on that, you know. It's just not the case. You want to do all these things. They are all kind of positive requests, but we can't fund them all. And if people go through and say yes, 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 that basically gives us no input, right? If everybody just says yes, that we don't know anybody's priorities. So I would encourage people to let us know what they're in the survey by checking just their most important items and in feedback next week and feedback via email, you know, say, talk about just the things that are the most important to them. Finally, of the three things that John requested that we have motions for, except the money, approve this process, and use $400,000 to offset the lost revenue, I would like to wait to next week to do, talk about the offset of revenue and vote on that next week until after we've heard from the finance committee. So I think the other two we can talk about doing tonight, that's accepting the money. I don't think that'll be hugely controversial. And then, and approving this process, or if we want to tweak the process, that's also fine. So we can talk about both those. So now I'll just open it up to comments from the board. Anybody want to make a comment?
Hi, Jim.
Okay, I just want to say I recognize, as other people did, that I made a whole bunch of comments about the rapid recovery program that were really supposed to be about this ARPA program. So just ignore that stuff I said before, but pretend I said it now. To summarize, I basically said, I think this process allows for this, that let's make sure to hear from, directly from, you know, the Acton Housing Authority, the water district, and the schools. And I think we already have heard directly from the water district and the schools. So I think the missing piece here might be the AHA, who have a lot of unfunded plans for, you know, improving the lives of their residents that they haven't been able to do because they're so underfunded.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, Himaj.
Yeah, just a quick process question. I was wondering how we came up with those numbers. Did it go through FinCom before, or is this going to be the first time they're looking at these numbers before making their decision?
No, the, FinCom will hear this presentation tomorrow night. If they want to make recommendations to us, they can.
Okay, so this will be the first, so they'll get the presentation tomorrow, and it'll be the first time they're seeing the breakdown of the numbers.
Breakdown of the numbers is just, and John can talk about more about this, but it is the requests from various departments or groups, the school, the water district, you know, whatever, and a figure as to what it would cost to fund those things, right? So, you know, the number, you know, you could take one of the school district things to, for example, to fund All Day K. By the way, the school district ones are discounted or by 15% or multiplied by 85% to split them between Acton and Boxborough. But it is actually not, unlike the assessment, there's no statutory requirement that we split along the same line. So, you know, Boxborough could choose to fund a food program and something else, and we could choose to fund All Day K and something else, right? Or we could split it, you know, it, you know, so some of the things we're going to have to do is to coordinate with the school district and with Boxborough on the things that we choose. So this is a little bit of an iterative process. Hopefully, on the October 4th, we have some measure of our priorities so that we can begin that, you know, balancing act with the school district and Boxborough.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
Okay. Oh, Jim?
I'm happy to start making these motions.
I'd just like to allow the public to weigh in first.
Beautiful.
Matt, could you allow people to speak, please?
Certainly. We've got Franny up first.
Hi, thank you, Franny Osman. I, it's funny, you mentioned about bulleting, because I was going to put one bullet, and I wanted us to spend, before I saw your amazing list, I wanted to spend all of it on constructing sidewalks. I have a question about the iterative, is there an iterative process? Like, I have been advised with, by some outside groups, to ask my town to spend some of this money on transportation, because most of the towns don't realize that they can use the ARPA money for transportation, and I don't see something in there. So if I come up with a, an idea for another use, such as sidewalks or transportation, that's not on the list, are other people going to have a chance to respond to that and give it any legs, or is it just all people responding to the list that was prepared so far?
So, several things there. First of all, just a response, it's my understanding that these monies cannot be used for things like sidewalks. It can't be used for that kind of construction.
Are you sure, are you sure about that? Because I was told to specifically...
Address.
So, yeah, so the, if there's a sidewalk that fulfills a specific need of helping the business community or helping families with specific equity needs, then I think there's a justification for it. But just building sidewalks in our sidewalk plans would not be a use that would get passed. It has to, has to be eligible based on the criteria. So it's a case-by-case basis. For example, one of the projects that we looked at was some streetscape improvements in West Acton. I don't know that we explicitly were going to be building sidewalks, but there's certainly a lot of things related to sidewalks that we were considering as part of that. So I think if it's part of a specific plan to help a business district, it may be something that would be eligible.
And then, Franny, in addition, if you want to suggest something, you know, you might want to use all the methods available to you, and this is true for any member of the public who'd like to suggest something that's not on the list. First of all, the survey in each category allows you to specify a project you'd like to see that's not listed. So you can say "other" and fill something in. Second is, you can write the Select Board an email saying you'd like us to consider something. And thirdly, you may speak at next week's meeting and advocate for something, and you advocate in front of the other people attending next week, maybe some, you know, motivate others to support your idea.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else, Matt? No. Okay, thank you. Jim, I'll take you up on your offer to start making those motions.
Okay. I move that the Select Board accept on behalf of the Town of Acton the $7,72,733 in funding allocated to our community from the American Rescue Plan Act.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Jim moves, and Fran seconds. Any discussion on that motion from the board? Seeing none, we'll vote. Jim, if you'll call the roll, please.
Fran Arsonalt.
Aye.
David Martin.
Aye.
Jim Snyder Grant says aye. Himaj Nagareddy.
This is such an amazing effort, so aye.
Dean Charter.
Aye.
Okay, we got, we've accepted $7 million bucks.
Now, what do we do with it?
Yeah. Well, that's the next motion I'd like to make. I move that the Select Board approve the process for allocating ARPA funds as presented on September 13th, 2021.
A second.
Any discussion from the board on this motion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Jim, if you could call the roll, please.
Fran Arsonalt.
Aye.
David Martin.
Aye.
Jim Snyder Grant says aye. Himaj Nagareddy.
Aye.
Dean Charter.
Aye.
Okay, we got money and a process.
And then the last one, as I said earlier, I would like to wait until the last motion that John suggested. I'd like to wait until next week, until after the FinCom weighs in. Specifically, that one for, to replace the revenue shortfall, I think is, it's important that the Select Board weigh in. Before we close this topic for this week, anything else anybody would like to say? And we'll devote probably most of next week's meeting to a listening session or for as long as, you know, you know, we have up to maybe some long limit, as much as people would like to make comments. Okay, and then the last thing is the consent items. I'll read them. If you'd like to hold one, please say. Number 15, approved meeting minutes, August 16th, 2021. Number 16, approve executive session minutes, August 16th, 2021. Seventeen, request to conduct hybrid meetings, land stewardship committee, economic development committee, and board of health. Eighteen, accept gift for landscape services from Todd O'Neill for the 9/11 monument, 371 Main Street Public Safety Facility. Nineteen, accept gift to Acton Fire Department for $5,000 from Digital Credit Union to support efforts providing programs and services to the community. Twenty, accept gift Recreation Department for $500 from Gold's Clothing to support production costs for the 2021 concerts and special events. Twenty-one, accept gift Recreation Department for $3,000 from Stage Music Center to support the production of costs of the 2021 concerts and special events. Twenty-two, accept gift Recreation Department for $100 from Mary Lou Smart to be used for constructing a dog park in Acton. Twenty-three, accept gift Veteran Services for $300 from Tom Wojak to be utilized at the discretion of the Veteran Services Officer. Twenty-four, one-day alcoholic beverage license from Karen Herther and Gary Capell, Nara Park, October 3rd, 2021. Twenty-five, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Lisa Harseb, Nara Park, October 2nd, 2021. So I will take a motion to approve consent items 15 through 25 inclusive.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
And Jim, would you call the roll, please?
Fran Arsonalt.
Aye.
David Martin.
Aye.
Jim Snyder Grant says aye. Himaj Nagareddy.
Aye.
Dean Charter.
Aye.
That's it.
And finally, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Ooh, so moved.
A second, second.
Okay, made and seconded, it's non-discussable. Please, Jim, call the roll.
Fran Arsonalt.
Aye.
David Martin.
Aye.
Jim Snyder Grant says aye. Himaj Nagareddy.
Aye.
Dean Charter.
Aye.
Our work is done.
Thank you, everyone. Sorry about the late hour.